All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to get underway this evening. Welcome, everyone, to this evening's planning board meeting, Tuesday, August 9th, beginning at 7:00 PM in Cahill Auditorium. We have our first public hearings starting at 7:15, so as we customarily do, we will be jumping down to the old new business section of our agenda. We do have a full board present this evening, so if the record could show that we have all members present this evening. And the first item on our old new business section of the agenda is the extension of time to complete the project. This is a project grading permit that we looked at a little while ago for 40 Connolly Circle. If staff could update us on that request.
If I may through the chair, I've been in discussions with Mr. Grindel. I think the board remembers he was here presenting the modifications to the slope and the grading work that was done without the benefit of the grading permit. And I had spoken to him, I'd say about a month or so ago, and they've had some health issues and different things that have precluded them from starting the project, and he expressed that to me and those concerns. So he asked for an extension of time to wrap this up by November 30th, and that's what's in front of the board this evening. If the board is so inclined to grant this extension, a motion, please, to November 30th. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Do any of the board members have any comments or questions regarding this request? No one? All right, so we will need a motion, a chair will entertain a motion to approve the extension of time to complete the project to, did you say November?
November 30th.
November 30th, 2022, for Planning Board File Number 21-18.
Motion.
A motion by Member Grove. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes for July 12th, 2022. Are there any comments on those meeting minutes? No comments? We would just need a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So move.
We have a motion by Member Kent and a second by Member Grove. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Anyone abstaining? Great, thank you. We also have on our agenda this evening, and I would encourage those of you that are attending this evening in the audience, if you're waiting to hear a project and you have a little bit of time, we have a QR code link on our agenda this evening that would take you right to the town's master plan website where you would be able to access our survey which we're conducting right now. There's a lot of great questions. If you don't have time this evening or want to take it home and share it with neighbors, family members, please do. We are hoping to get a lot of feedback. The last, our last master plan steering committee meeting, which was a couple weeks ago, we had, the consultant thought it was a great turnout so far on our survey, but we had maybe 360 people respond, and we have 37,000 residents, so I feel like we still have some work to do. So any bit you can do to help us spread the word and take the survey yourselves is really helpful. And then just a general update on the master plan, we're continuing to spread the word on the survey. We're moving into what will be coming up, a second community meeting that is in October, I think.
October 15th.
So still kind of churning through a lot of the existing conditions data and then moving into a visioning, so I think a lot more to come out on that. I don't know if staff has any further update or if any of the members have any questions specific to the master plan? We have a couple minutes to kill before our next public hearing, so I don't know if anybody wants to comment.
I don't have anything additional to add, Madam Chair. I think, I think you covered it again, just emphasizing the importance of public participation, and the more input that we receive, the more the outcome of the master plan itself will reflect the vision and goals of the residents.
Oh, yes, if you could come up, sure, I'll take a, I'll take a little bit of pub, we have a little bit of time, so if you want to, just for the record, just state your name and address.
My business in Braintree or the Waymouth, okay. So it's Deanna Murphy, it's Verde Salon. We're currently 89 Hancock Street, but we're going to be moving to 865 Washington Street, so we're going to have a little bit bigger of a space. And we, as, we're very community-based, so as a salon, we'd love to be able to be a part of it. We're very sustainable, so I think that's something, if the master plan involves local businesses, we'd love to be a part of it.
That's awesome. I mean, we are trying to reach out to local businesses. We have tried to, like when we were having our first forum, our community forum, we had reached out to, I mean, it was the Master Plan Steering Committee primarily trying to get-
Yeah, the, from Glow, I know her, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, Shelley North is on the Master Plan Steering Committee, too.
Yeah, I saw that on the website.
Yeah, so we've been trying to advertise in businesses. Some are more receptive than others, but anyone who wants to-
Honestly, the first time I heard of it was coming to the meetings here for something that's not related to it, so it piqued my interest, and I went online and looked at it, and as like, we try to give back to our community and be sustainable, so I think it'd be something we'd be interested in.
I'll let the director speak, too, because she can help direct you as well.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, if you have visited the website or you have clients that come to the salon that are interested, we're in the process now of updating some of our information, and we will, you can actually probably get some of that, like, right from the website, and you can post it-
Okay.
-in your store.
Yeah, we do like weekly newsletters and stuff to our clients, so it's something that we could definitely add in there.
Yeah, and you're more than welcome to take the survey. There's an option to elect, like, if you're not a resident, you choose I'm a business owner or I own land or something like that, but any way that you think you can get input through your clients would be more than welcome.
Yeah, definitely, that would be awesome. Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And we are encouraging residents and also business owners and even people who visit Braintree passing through, whether it's to shop or to work, to take the survey. There's options to, to input, you know, your status and interest in the town's master plan, but I think it's imperative that we have lots of voices in helping us formulate what we will have as our future vision and what we'll work towards. Do any board members have any comments or questions or want to share anything? Has, has everybody taken the survey? Well, take the survey. It's open for a couple more weeks, and I'm sure we'll keep collecting information. We, we unfortunately have to wait until 7:15 to start our new public hearings, so we have a couple minutes. I don't know if there's anybody else in the audience who wants to make a comment about the master plan or ask any questions. I know it's hard to attend multiple town meetings throughout the month, so if you want to voice anything, feel free to come up, otherwise we're just going to stare at each other for five minutes. Sure, so the question from the same speaker earlier had asked, is asking, what could a business do to help with the master plan? I would say, feel free to come to any of our community events and identify yourself as a business owner. If there's particular interested topics in the master plan that you're, you're interested in, say, a small business owner that's concerned about parking their building or access to their building, you know, you might be more interested in transportation aspects of the master plan. You know, make sure that you're at least giving feedback in some format. I, I think we're going to work through in the next couple months what the vision is and then how do we get there. So I think as opportunities arise for the business, business community to take ownership in future stages of like, how do we actually get these visions into place? You know, just kind of keeping an eye out for like, being on like committees or being part of like future planning and just really letting the town know you're, you want to help. I think it's hard to, to know who's in it to do the work, businesses, residents, like, I think it's very important that we all, we keep each other aware of, aware of that. So right now, you could advertise the survey, you know, you could, you could even just put this agenda in your waiting room and know people, or if they're, you know, waiting to get a service done or something at your business, it's a good time to, to do the survey. So the master plan, the question was just-
Yeah, I'm sorry, but can you please just come up? Yeah, it's, it's being recorded at home and-
Oh, I was just going to try to repeat the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious of what, if you could elaborate on the transportation parking, like, kind of piqued a little bit of what you said, of like a parking issue or just-
So the master plan itself has separate components for different aspects. I think there's technically seven different components. One of them is like transportation, parking, pedestrian access. It's all kind of tied together. It's like the section of the master plan that focuses on that. So like an example, as we're moving into visioning, you know, if there was, you know, businesses in an area of town that didn't have enough public parking, or they were hoping for different type of facilities, whether it's better pedestrian access at crosswalks near their business or things like that, like if there's issues that you know of around your business that affect your business, like we would have no way of knowing that.
Unless it's voiced, okay.
Exactly. So that might just be one example.
Okay, perfect. And then what is the, I saw that there was sustainability. What does that aspect mean, like in a general term for the plan?
Oh, you can take that one if you want.
Yeah, I, so sustainability is a, a separate element, but what we have decided was to kind of roll that into all of the aspects of the plan, and it does include green infrastructure, water supply, even sustainability around development and sort of development patents. It really is, is limitless.
Okay, so as like a local, as a business that is very green, we have a lot of green initiatives that we do that we'd be able to like share with other salons to help them like reduce their water waste, do composting, recycle all their hair, their color, all that, so that's something that we could kind of bring in as education for other businesses like ours in the town? Is that kind of-
Yeah, and I, and to the, to the chair's point, we have all the meeting schedules. We have another meeting on the 18th, which will be here in this room, and this one's just going to be mostly an update on the summer tools, the survey, and also there's another tool called a meeting in the box, which is an opportunity for people. Not everybody likes to come out and talk, not everybody can come to an evening meeting, but it's an opportunity to host kind of a smaller setting, whether they're with friends, coworkers, or family, and kind of ask these questions and sort of brainstorm.
Brainstorm a little bit, okay.
Yeah, and submit that information as well.
That's the 18th of August?
There's a meeting, yep, there's a meeting on the 18th. I don't remember the September date. We meet basically every month.
Okay, and that's open for anybody?
Yep.
Okay.
And then every couple months, we have like a real, like more of a, if you haven't been to the meetings and you want to get caught up on things type of, type of event.
All right, perfect, great. Thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at 7:15, we will be opening our new public hearing. As we line up for that, that will be for 131A Pond Street, File Number 22-07. We will, it's waiting a minute.
We were just testing.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think she is here, yeah.
I have 7:15, so 131A Pond Street, new public hearing, File 22-07, is a grading permit. If I could have staff, please read into the record the public notice and then we can get started.
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 11, and the Braintree zoning ordinance, Chapter 135, Article 5, 6, 11, and 12. The public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, August 9th, 2022, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will consider a grading permit application from the applicant, Mark and Teresa Farina. The applicant is proposing to stabilize and grade the existing slope of the rear yard with several retaining walls up to six feet in height. The site is 12,061 square feet and has an address of 131A Pond Street. It is owned by residents B and was, and is within the 100-year floodplain zone A and watershed protection overlay district as shown on Assessor's Plan 1041 Plot 22B.
Thank you very much. I'll have the applicant just give an overview of the project, but I will ask you to just grab the microphone and hold it. I think you can bring it around, yeah, and just kind of stand in front of the podium and just, yep, hold that right up as you speak into it. That'll be great.
That's okay.
You have to put it right by your mouth, though, so-
Right here, put the frame closer. Good evenings. For welcome, my name is Cheaman from Hardy Pussman Design Group. I'm the civil engineering director for this project. The subject properties is 131A Pond Street. On the site plan, has a locust. This is one of those rear lot that was created before the zoning, so it's really, doesn't have frontage, it's the back of the rear lot that has a trail foot railway access from Pond Street into the rear lot. And it has, you know, one of the few lot that has actually water access, is a beachfront access to Sunset Lake. What we are proposing to, tonight is, is really, just our current title is to repair what is out there right now, is a patio and some wooden retaining wall, a wood stair that go down to the steep slope at the beach. What we are proposing, because all the, all the wood getting rotted out, we are trying to repair what is out there, and we are extending the existing patio out a little bit and create a terrace wall. And as you can see, we have a, we have a, just easier to see, have a grow up. So I have a grow up section of the area. The dash line is the existing grade. So what we are proposing is to create a tier, two-tier wall with the granite, like the keystone type granite block modular wall. They are four foot high, so it's step, two-step up to create a nice patio behind the building. And the existing slope is, you know, various straw and weed and poorly maintained, is in a steep slope, it's a two-to-one slope. So this enable us to create, you know, two tiers, planting area, and also much easier to maintain. The, we got some prior comments from the Conservation Commission and also the planning staff. And one of the comment was that our, the proposed work was further into the first zone, which I have to apologize, I read the map wrong, they corrected me, so what we did is to, we put the wall back right up to the first zone line and start the, start the work at the 100-year front line, which is at the elevation 110, as shown on the plan. And that way, because of the existing grade kind of like curve out, we'll start at the, the wall is going to be straight, we start at the 110 and basically level off the base of wall at the level area. That is going to help us also on the drainage as well, because instead of the two-to-one slope, we are not going to be creating a lot of erosion, which is happening right now, is the tier wall, this flat area. So I think it's going to be a great improvement. With that, we also have some mitigation measures on the planting. We do have a planting plant with some plant material that's going to be planted on the wall and also on the slope itself to restore the area. And part of the comments from the staff is that we should also low man seat the area. For the record, I did a written response to Connor's staff report. Three copies, I will email you the file tomorrow. That has the revised plan addressing all the comments and also all the material that you asked for and the print. And the comments have extra copies to respond if the board member would like to see. Basically, there's a few comments, he's looking for a stamp survey with repot by, documents for the existing trail foot railway for the site access. There's some deed and old plans that show the trail foot railway. We showed the low man seat and also adding some, you know, call out some top of wall, bottom of wall elevations and extending, also extending the contours on the sideline further out to demonstrate we are not impacting and enabling properties. We are scheduled for Conservation Commission after last week, but there was no quorum, so we are going to be meet with them again next week. But the revised plan pretty much addressed all the comments from Conservation Agent Kelly, and we met last week, and I believe she certified all the revisions.
And then just a reminder, as we talk through this application this evening, this is a new public hearing, so if anybody from the public is here and wishes to ask questions or speak with regards to this application, please come on up to the podium and do so. If I could just ask, we have just received some new information from the applicant, but if, if I could ask Assistant Director Murphy to just kind of review where staff is on the report and just kind of go over your staff report that we had before us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We reviewed the application against Article 12. That's what the staff report reflects. There were some minor requests made to be added to the plan. There were some other revisions that needed to be made as well. Ultimately, the staff recommendation that was mattered tonight is to continue this with testimony to the September 13th meeting, as the applicant has a chance to, they have revised plans, but we seek permission to draft findings and conditions on this.
Okay, great. So do you want, do you want to take commentary tonight, but ultimately the, we'll have to continue to get draft conditions and stuff for the next, all right, great.
Correct, yes.
Not seeing anybody from the public coming up. Member McComme, do you have any comments or questions regarding this application?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Mann, so the reason behind this grading request is simply that the conditions have deteriorated and the owner wants, I read for safety reasons, is basically just to replace and improve.
Yes, that's correct, and I just want to add that there's no added impervious on the whole project.
There's no added impervious?
There's no, no new impervious on the project, it's just doing the retaining wall and doing landscaping. And there's no tree cuttings, it's, we are just removing some strawberry on the steep slope.
Okay, thank you. And, and maybe I'll ask the Assistant Director, so the type of drainage work, you know, obviously being right next to Sunset Lake and the retaining walls and so on, is there a consistency around the lake for, for this type of work and what's being done and, and, you know, drainage in particular? I know there's not a lot you can do, because it's right next, but is it consistent, you know, kind of around the lake?
Yes, I mean, Pond Street's fairly elevated from Sunset Lake itself as opposed to the other properties along Franklin Street and Washington Street, but what the applicant is proposing is in kind with the abutting parcels as well. They're all sort of terraced down to the lake.
Okay, perfect.
I will add, we received correspondence from DPW, and they have indicated that they do not require any stormwater permitting for this project.
Got it, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme. Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions?
Has there been any feedback from the neighbors on either side of the proposed property or of the proposed work?
Well, we have not heard any feedback. The client is here as well, I mean, they live next to each other, so I have not heard that there is any complaint, simply improving the existing conditions.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Member Grove, any comments or questions?
No, ma'am.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
No, Member McComme and then McCrowe have covered mine.
Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
I just want to add that, you know, the owner is doing the right thing. He had a contractor come in and start doing the work. He should, he said, no, we better check with the town, and here we go, file the grading permit rather than doing after the fact. Do a lot of the after the fact, too, but.
I just had a, I guess I just had a comment question. I think the Assistant Director had flagged it as well, but there is a section of pavement that encroaches on the neighbor to the east, and I was wondering, kind of, is that-
There's actually a house here that's kind of like a common access through this railway to access to this lot as well.
Okay, so they use, is there a parking area for that house next to it?
Yeah, they kind of shared the parking, like, back here.
Oh, okay.
They have their own parking in front of the house as well.
Okay. I don't have any further comments or questions. Is there anybody from the public that has any comments or questions? I think we would just be looking to continue this to the September, what's the date on that meeting? September 13th at 7:15? We just need a motion to continue. A motion to continue to September 13th at 7:15.
Move to continue to September 13?
Yep, at 7:15. We have a motion by Member McComme, a second by Member Grove. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, thank you very much. We'll see you next month. The next item on our agenda is the first continued public hearing of the evening. That is Banner Park, 60 Columbia Street, File Number 22-03. It's a special permit and site plan review. Banner Park Campus LLC is the applicant, and I understand that they'll be opening up the presentation this evening with an update on their progress.
Chris Reel, managing partner of Banner Park Campus. Unfortunately, Attorney Palmucci couldn't be with us tonight, so you're stuck with me. I'll do the best I can. So we started this process earlier this year, went through several rounds of peer review comments. I think this is now the fourth meeting. It's been a very productive process, working with Melissa and her team, understanding the public feedback. We acquired this property back in December. It's obviously a very large property, close to 130 acres, you know, there's many things you could do with it, and I think that this process has been very helpful for our team in understanding some concerns raised by Waymouth and some of the abutting properties. And I hope what you're here tonight is our efforts to address some of those while still maintaining our proposed vision and what we think the, the project could be. So up here is a list of, of the meetings. Carlos can run through some of those, and if you have any questions, we've had several neighborhood meetings, some specific meetings requested by Waymouth, which we attended and heard community feedback, and then we were scheduled for a fourth Conservation Commission hearing last week that was, there wasn't a quorum, so I believe that's scheduled for September. So this is the, the project. Carlos, again, will, will go into some of the specifics on, you know, what we're calling Building A and Building B. I think we have made significant changes to Building B, peeled that back quite a bit given the concerns of the neighbors. Carlos, again, will, will speak to that. I think we've maintained and have worked with Melissa and her team on, on what the remainder of the site will be in providing public access to the trails, which has been an important part of this project for us from the beginning. I can talk about that in a little bit. And we have cited the, the dog park, and I think where it's located in the plan makes it much more publicly accessible, which we're excited about. So again, I, I think, you'll, you'll see on a later slide, and maybe we started the presentation- So again, I think you'll see on a later slide, and maybe we started the presentation with this, this project was initially approved both locally and through MEPA, I believe, back in 1990, and they're really utilizing the entire site. A big part of this for us, even though we engineered the whole site and there's significant developable land, was keeping that 40 acres undeveloped. And there is an existing trail network back there. We've walked it with the New England Wildlife Center. They do a bunch of programming back there. It connects all the way to the rear of the property and takes you out to Cranberry Pond. So we have a bit of that material, but it has been a feature and it's been great to work with various different constituents on what that could possibly be in the future. And I think this is what I was referencing. This is, this was the original Tricon Park project. We don't need to dwell on that. I think that's been mentioned before, but I just wanted to show it to illustrate that, you know, a big part of this project is those two buildings are sized appropriate to market demand. I think Braintree over the last few months has got significant momentum in the biotech industry and manufacturing. And the two buildings, we thought it was both, A, a better, more responsible use of the property to consolidate the development to the front of the site, and B, we'd have a better chance of attracting some of the high-quality tenants that have already found Braintree to be a great place to do business. Very briefly, and Carlos can answer questions on this, but I know concerns that were raised in previous meetings were, you know, we have an industrial project and we have, you know, Mass General on the front of the site that was previously approved, and, you know, how does the public access this property and the trails? You know, frankly, I think I do quite a bit of hiking myself, and I think a trailhead behind two industrial buildings is probably not the best place for that. So there is existing access in the way we have it conceived from the other existing more established trailheads for people that want to walk, but I think this new access at the front of the site reduces the amount of travel on the main access road that people need to do, and I think is very prominent. We provided some public parking spaces, and there is a direct access to the trails from this area. So I think it will help the general public in accessing this away from both the neighbors on the other side of the property and as well as the businesses that will be locating This is a conceptual trail map. There's much work to be done on this. I think it would be, and we are looking forward to working with members of the community and discussed, you know, forming a committee. There are people that walk their dogs there now. There are people that know that property way better than we do, and it's been really great to work with the New England Wildlife Center. They've been there for close to 20 years, know that property very well. We have entered into an agreement with them where they're going to help construct and maintain those trails, and I think they'll have a seat at the table as well others. So the, much of the trail network outside of our property is existing. What is shown there in red is largely existing, but I do think needs some coordination with both Conservation and members of the public. But I do think provides a very robust access to the trails, and, you know, this has really finally come together. I know it's been thrown about in many meetings, but it frankly didn't make a ton of sense until, you know, we provided this more public trail access. So I think that's largely it for an update. I do want to touch, Carlos is going to talk about the specific changes that we've made. Excuse me. I know MEPA's come up a few times. We have started the MEPA process, so there's a new, there is a new regulation that went into effect in January, the environmental justice notification, so we submitted that. And the first date that we can submit an ENF, which is kind of the first submission, is August 15th. And so I think the way we've approached this is, you know, we've had extensive peer reviews. We've changed the plan in response to concerns. I think it's a much better project and one that we believe is very marketable. So the upshot of that is that we're going to submit an expanded ENF, so instead of, you know, three submissions, it would be two, and we'd largely be using all of the materials that were reviewed by this board, by the peer reviewers. And so we're ahead of the game there. There's a few other things that we need to do, but our plan is to submit that this month, assuming that we get approval so that we know we have a final plan. And then we'll go through that process. There's been concerns, and I saw most recently correspondence from the Town of Waymouth and their peer reviewer about the MEPA process. There's never an intent to short circuit that. It's very much a part of the approval process and one that we are fully prepared to go through and have a great group of consultants that have been through this many times. I do think, I feel comfortable that this process has been very extensive and great care was given to the neighbors on both sides of this. And even though it's a larger property with much more developable area that previously was approved for much more, we feel comfortable that the MEPA process will kind of be on track, and we're going to start our design process, so we feel like we won't lose any time and look forward to addressing any comments and concerns that are raised in that process. So appreciate your time. I'm going to kick it over to Carlos, who has more details on the changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Madam Chair, members of the board, Carlos Sculte with Civil and Environmental Consultants were the civil engineers on this project. So I'll just walk through some of the changes that we've incorporated into the plans since the previous submission. And as mentioned earlier, the revised plans have been through another round of peer review comments. The revised letters we received back as it relates to the stormwater, as well as the traffic engineering components of the project. We did receive them back earlier this week and late last week, so I believe all their comments have been addressed with a few just record-keeping things to clean up as we move forward. So one of the elements that I want to touch on here is, it was discussed more so in the Conservation Commission hearing than it was as part of the planning process, but I did want to bring it up here and just speak to it a little bit. There was reference to some vernal pools that were located along the easterly property line within the Town of Waymouth. So we did reengage the wetlands consultant that we have for the project. He went back out with the Conservation Commission, joined as well by the Town of Waymouth Conservation Commission and some of the residents. And they went out and flagged the wetlands, performed an inspection, and then we went out and surveyed the wetland flags that were hung in the field defining these vernal pool areas. So all these are on the plans, and we are outside of the 100-foot essentially protection area around the vernal pools that are associated with it according to the regulations. So our project is not within those areas. It was reviewed in the field. We understand it was agreed by both Conservation Agents, and we are outside that area, so I just wanted to bring that up. Additional material and description was provided as part of the Conservation Commission process as well. So some of the changes. So this initial slide, I just want to show, just to give an idea of the changes that we've seen and the magnitude of the changes since the original submission of this project months ago. The red line that you see on the plan is the limit of grading or the limit of disturbance that was associated with the original proposal. I think the most notable change is that we'll see is along the Waymouth Town Line in the southeast corner of the project. There was a number of revisions that we've incorporated into the project over the course of the changes here, which included elimination of an exterior trailer storage area. It included reductions by approximately 10,000 square feet of the actual Building B area, which pulled all the limit of work further up to the north. It included shifting the loading docks over approximately 40 feet to the west, as well as other revisions to fencing and screening. The current proposal that we have in front of you now includes a 15-foot fence, which is an upgrade from the 10-foot fence that we had previously proposed. We've added some height to provide some additional visual screening as well as noise buffering along that property line. So there's been a lot of changes in that area that have helped provide additional buffering to the Waymouth Town Line in the southeast corner of the property, where now we're approximately 140 feet away from the Town Line with the proposed screening fence, where the original proposal was a little bit more than 30 feet. So it's a significant change in the project in that area. We've been able to scale it back and maintain more natural vegetation and buffering and screening along that edge. Additionally, you'll see that the project was pulled up further to the north, which provided additional setback in maintaining vegetated areas along the wetlands on the southerly edge of the project as well. So with the reduction of 10,000 square feet of Building B, we were able to pull everything up a little further and provide more of a natural buffer to that existing wetland to the south. And then also, as part of the recent changes, we've eliminated the open basin that's in northwest corner of the property, which is the bottom-left corner of the plan. So by eliminating that and incorporating more subsurface stormwater chambers beneath the paving, we've been able to reduce the amount of tree clearing and disturbance in that area, which also helps provide more natural vegetation and buffering in the northwest corner of the site as well. So in a little more detail, this just shows what I was just mentioning in northwest corner of Building A. Essentially, we were able to eliminate that open air basin, which enabled us to minimize the buffering and the landscape disturbance that we have in that area. And on the latest plans, we also provided some additional information as it related to the wetland enhancements that are also proposed along the westerly edge of the property, which are part of the Conservation Commission process, which includes more planting, more wetland species that are essentially infilling in in that vegetated area. So it's basically supplementing that natural vegetation that's there today. And as mentioned earlier, Building B is part of these changes relative to the last submission we had in front of you. A big part of that change was in response to the comments that we received from the abutters as part of this process that we've had, both here as well as the Conservation Commission hearings that we've had. So the total square footage of Building B was reduced by 10,000 square feet. Essentially, the northerly edge of the building was held, and essentially we took 10,000 square feet off the building at the southerly edge, which allowed us to pull everything up further to the north by an equivalent amount. And as mentioned earlier, we were able to move the loading docks away from the edge, so they're more centrally located within the building. We worked with the architecture team to make sure that that wouldn't negatively or materially impact the functionality within the building, although it's not the ideal condition there. I think that by providing that additional buffering, I think it could be accommodated into the building and still continue to function well. And as mentioned earlier, that wall that we have or the fence that we have along the easterly edge of the property, we've upgraded that to be 15 feet tall, which provides a significant visual as well as a sound attenuation buffer along the easterly property closest to the Waymouth residence. You can see the Tommy Marks homes at the upper right corner of the plans there. And there was also some drainage reconfiguration within the site with all the additional test pitting that was done. A revised stormwater management plan was prepared, providing additional detail for the stormwater management design. We reconfigured a lot of the subsurface stormwater management chambers to work with the additional testing to ensure we're providing the additional separation we need from the groundwater and also to make sure that it was designed in accordance with the information we saw for the subsurface soil conditions. All that was detailed in a very robust response to comments memorandum, which again was submitted to the town for review. The third-party peer reviewer did review it and provided a memorandum in response indicating that generally all the comments were addressed to their satisfaction. And again, just speaking about the grading and the drainage, I won't take too much time up here, but this just shows the magnitude of the impacts and the revisions that we incorporated into the project. The pink area that you see kind of faded in the background, we had a larger square stormwater management system with the additional test pitting that was performed. We reconfigured the system and added a few more chambers there to account for the elimination of that subsurface basin area. We also fine-tuned the grading, and we also provided some additional stormwater BMPs into the project design, including level spreaders at the outlets to help dissipate the stormwater flow so that they wouldn't just have a point source discharge that allows the water to be spread more evenly at the discharge locations to better maintain those existing flow patterns. And two additional significant elements that we incorporated into the project design, in the original submission, we made mention to the project potentially being a land use with higher potential for pollutant loads. Ultimately, with some of the revisions throughout the process, we essentially acknowledged that that would be the case. We incorporated a number of stormwater management features to account for that. It included shut-off valves that were introduced prior to the stormwater infiltration systems at all of the connection locations. So there's a new valve located just upstream of all the stormwater management systems, which can be manually turned off. If there is a spill or something else happens at the site, it allows that to be controlled better at the source, so it doesn't get into the groundwater. An additional, we reviewed the stormwater management BMPs for proprietary water quality systems in conjunction with some of the other elements, the deep-sun-hooded catch basins and the overall capacity of the system, just to evaluate it to ensure that it'd be able to provide the capacity, contain an equivalent amount of spills should there be a situation like that, just documenting that we have those additional measures that can accommodate those kind of situations. And then there was also a discussion of the drainage discharge ultimately being a outstanding resource water. Ultimately, this does drain downstream to a public water supply area or attributable to a public water supply. So we incorporated additional analysis and reevaluated the stormwater compliance to ensure that it met the standards for that, ultimately upsizing some of the stormwater controls in the proprietary systems to account for that. We also introduced a bio-retention basin or a rain garden at the downstream location of one of the discharges behind Building B. You can see it in the bottom-right corner of the plan there, where after it goes through the additional treatment that we have for the deep-sun-hooded catch basins, the proprietary water quality units, the infiltration system, they also flow, one of the systems flows through the bio-retention basin that allows for additional sediment removal and treatment prior to ultimately discharging back to the existing wetlands. So there was a number of revisions, a number of essentially modifications to help improve the water quality and the overall treatment of the system. And we also reconfigured in the upper-right corner of the site there behind Building B, reconfigured that drainage system to ensure that we're providing additional stormwater recharge in that area. And that's one of the areas that does ultimately drain to that vernal pool area that we talked about at the beginning. So we evaluated that in more detail to ensure that, one, we don't increase the stormwater rate of runoff to the vernal pool area, nor do we decrease the amount of recharge that is naturally occurring there under existing conditions. With some of the modifications, we've been able to document that the design does in fact meet both the surface runoff as well as the recharge that's being provided there. So as we touched on it earlier, one of the main areas of focus was what can we do to provide additional buffering and screening to the Tommy Marks residence and the residential properties in Waymouth? So in addition to the height being added to the fence, we also provided additional landscape plans that provided more robust landscaping in that area, which will provide more of a visual barrier at the low level, because there is so much mature landscaping out there, the tree canopy is a little bit higher up. We want to make sure that we're going to be able to infill more at the ground level and, you know, head height with some natural vegetation that's going to help screen the fence essentially from view. So we'll have the noise and the buffering attenuation from the development side of the property, as well as a visual barrier that looks more natural from the residential side of the properties as well. So with that, that's a summary of the project revisions that we have. One of the things that I will mention is from a traffic management standpoint, we did also provide additional analysis in response to the original comments that came back from the town's peer review engineer. They provided a second peer review memorandum as well. We understand there's no major outstanding issues at this time. One of the things that we did look at was how the parking ratios do fit within the project that we've allocated because there isn't a defined use for the CGMP type of facility that tenants that we're looking at. We looked at it from a few different standpoints, essentially a mix of the various potential uses that we could see at the site, whether it's a mix of office and research or light manufacturing or the warehouse uses that are contemplated. So we evaluated that and essentially stress-tested it based on, you know, ratios of those uses being within the buildings. And ultimately, the parking that we provided does meet essentially the mix that you would be able to see for a facility of this size, based on the mix and the size that you would have for an office use proportional to the warehouse and the manufacturing in this kind of facility. So I know that was part of the review and the analysis that we did, just to ensure that the parking we're providing does meet those ratios. And I think just as part of the ongoing work that would be proposed at the site, there would be ongoing oversight and management and evaluation of how the site functions, just to document and ensure that it is functioning as it was anticipated based on the traffic analysis as well as the parking analysis that was performed. So there's going to be some ongoing or proposed ongoing, you know, oversight and coordination just to make sure that the design that we have in front of you is actually meeting those goals and the design metrics that we've proposed for the project. So with that... So with that, I'll open it up to the board or the planning department with any questions.
Great, thank you very much. I think we have a lot of new information tonight, and you touched on the peer review reports that we've received back. We have with us tonight, I think, one of our peer review consultants with MDM. So Mr. Mashad is here, so I'm going to ask him to come up and just kind of go over his findings. I believe our consultant who did the drainage review with Merrill, Ms. Deb Keller, is not available this evening, but I'll touch base on kind of an overview of the report we received from her. And then I will also note which we can have the applicant confirm. It looks like we also have some correspondence from Green International, which I think was a peer review that was done by the town of Weymouth, and it looks like the majority of those items were addressed. So after Mr. Mashad gives us an update, I'll just maybe have the applicant's engineer come back up and just make any comments with regards to the other two peer reviews. But with that, Mr. Mashad, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair and Board members. Bob Micho with MDM Transportation Consultants. So this is the first, we've actually presented the findings of our peer review, so I'm going to cover it in two pieces. The applicant originally submitted a traffic impact and access assessment in February, or dated February of this year, and subsequently amended that in May of 2022. So we've actually issued an initial review on the basis of those two submitted documents. And as the board is now aware, the update to the program shifted the mix of uses to potentially all research, development, or GMP, good manufacturing process type uses, which is a higher generating category among the available end uses that might go in there eventually. Their initial filing was slanted a little bit more toward warehousing in particular, and we had preliminary commentary on, gee, if that shifts to a higher generating use, what does that mean? So the supplement that they filed in May was very helpful, and that it encapsulates now what we would consider to be the highest-impact scenario for the potential redevelopment of that property. So we've issued two peer review documents, the first of them in May, following the issuance of the supplement, and we had identified a total of about a dozen or so comments that related not only to how the traffic study was conducted, and whether or not that met certain industry standards, which in fact it did, but also certain aspects of the site plan itself, is it related to maneuverability, access, circulation, safety issues like sightlines at driveways and things of that nature. The applicant then proceeded to amend its site plan, and Carlos went over some of the highlights to that. We've had at least two meetings with staff, with Melissa, and with the applicant to talk about those changes and how they might relate to certain questions that we've had in our peer review. The essence of our review is as follows, that we believe that the originally submitted study and the supplement meet good industry practices in terms of how they've evaluated the impact of the project. And what I mean by that is that we believe that they have used appropriate baseline traffic volume conditions that were collected prior to the pandemic, that those were grown to a future-year scenario, and have included other area project background developments appropriately, and they've estimated the trip generation characteristics of the use based on good industry or current industry practices and trip rates. So we don't have any remaining comments as it relates to those aspects of the project. The traffic study has indicated that while there is a measurable impact that will occur at certain locations, right, and they would include the driveway itself, the Grove Street intersection signal just to the west, and eventually the Grove and Liberty signal, which was also the subject of the CVS review recently, that those three principally impacted locations do not sustain any change in level of service as a result of the project. However, it's abundantly clear that there are constraints that already exist along the Grove Street quarter. So the nature of our commentary really had to do with how this applicant might proportionally contribute to a larger solution to the Grove Street quarter in particular. And secondly, what actions would be necessary to ensure that the driveway itself, which is the most impacted location, is operating appropriately and at its maximum capacity day one, you know, once, when they open up their doors? The recommendation is a financial contribution that would allow or contribute to funds already provided by others to advance improvements at locations like Liberty Street Signal, for instance, or that could be used to advance a design of the quarter that's consistent with the Central, the Regional Planning Authority Quarter Study that was recently completed for Grove Street. As the board is aware, that Quarter Study identifies pedestrian-oriented improvements that are critically needed to get people off the road, if they're pedestrians or bicyclists, and onto appropriate infrastructure. And secondly, to address capacity issues specifically at the two signalized locations, or actually Liberty and Grove. So we believe that a proportional funding contribution will be appropriate and will be a meaningful way of advancing one or a combination of those improvements, including the possibility that the town might actually advance or pursue MassWorks grant funds for those types of improvements. As it relates to parking, another comment we had related to the likelihood that you'll have a higher parking generation rate for a research and development type use, we had questioned the ability for the site to appropriately accommodate potential peak parking demand. The applicant has adjusted its program to essentially bank about 144 parking spaces that provide flexibility. Depending on who actually tenants the buildings, they have the ability to increase the effective parking ratio, if necessary, to accommodate those higher generating uses. Their initial foray or plan is to provide just over 400 parking spaces that result in an effective parking ratio of about one and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet of building area. We believe that's appropriate as a starting point, and we also concur that the additional banked parking spaces would be appropriate and consistent with potential higher generating uses. From a site circulation perspective, the applicant has made changes to loading access design and has prepared auto-turn analyses that clearly indicate the ability for larger tractor-trailer trucks to access and circulate within those rear building areas. So we're satisfied that the site design achieves an appropriate standard for circulation, and they've, as well, from a safety perspective, added certain notes and annotations on the plan set that would ensure that the sightlines at the driveway meet appropriate safety-based standards. There are a number, all of this information really is now incorporated into the staff report, so I don't need to go into a lot of detail. I'd rather just answer any questions that the board might have on any of that. And at that, I'll hand it back to the Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that update. I'm going to ask staff just for an update on just the drainage peer review aspect, since we don't have our peer consultant here this evening, so if you can just give a brief summary of their review.
Yep, we received Deb Keller's memo late last week, and I would call, I would quantify her comments sort of as housekeeping, indicating none of these are sort of major concerns. Carlos has already taken that memo and gone through it, and the plans that I handed you this evening outline the revisions that were noted, oh, excuse me, that were needed based on Deb's comments. And again, just my housekeeping type of items. She didn't have any major concerns, and those, the few things that she did note in the report are already on the plans that you have.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, this is still an open public hearing, so I would like to take this opportunity to recognize anybody from the public who wishes to ask any comments, anything new or questions about the revisions to date, or any questions that they would like to bring forward at this time, to please, please do that. And then, just as a friendly reminder, to just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello again. Deanna Murphy, 77, Tommy Marks Way. So first, I'd like to thank the board members that took the time to ask numerous questions at the last meeting to the developer. After all these meetings, I've had numerous babysitters, multiple lost hours with time off of work, so I really appreciate it because I finally felt heard. I'd also like to point out that at the last meeting, with all those questions that you did ask, every answer from the developer was a no. All of us were told numerous times the building would not be moved, the loading docks would not be moved, and that was it. So I would love to think that out of the goodness of their heart and caring for their neighbors is the reason that they decided to adjust their plans. It was purely based off of the fact that they are now just recognizing Weymouth Wetlands and certified vernal pools on their plan. We would be living in the Dark Ages if we would like to think that an imaginary line would stop where wetlands and vernal pools are. Everybody always talks about community and what's best for our community and what we can do to help our community. Weymouth and Braintree are neighbors. We are a community. We help each other and we support each other. A town line should not sway the opinion of this board on whether this affects its community, Braintree resident or not. The minimal amount that they did move the loading docks is still not sufficient enough. While it is appreciated, the noise and air pollution is still too close. As I mentioned the last time, I have an eco-friendly business, and a green initiative is our number-one priority in any decision that we make. Even as small as we are, we can make a huge impact. So the fact that the project of this magnitude cannot consider green initiatives or be mandated to do some is very disappointing. They mentioned that they cannot do any green initiatives on their roof because there will be no room. This is a direct question to them. What exactly is going on that roof? Is there a plan of all the equipment that would be going on there? Because I would assume that all of it is going to be extremely loud and/or expelling a huge amount of air pollution. The privacy fence, do you, Carlos, do you mind pulling the privacy fence section up? Because I do have a question on that. Do you want me to point on this one or that one? Because you won't be able to hear me.
Yeah, if you, whichever one you move towards, just take the mic with you.
I'll show you guys first, and then I'll ask him. So from what I looked at from the plans, it looks like this was the only privacy fence?
And it goes out?
Does it go all the way around like that? Okay, all right. So the ones we looked at, it looked like it was just this, which didn't, like this was covered, so all that, is it okay? Thank you. So as much as I would love to see this permit denied, I do have questions about the operations and some requests if it is permitted. Again, we request that the loading docks be moved away from residential houses. The amount of studies on health effects of diesel exhaust is overwhelming. Some of these key findings are reduced lung function in children associated with diesel truck exhaust within 1,000 feet, strongest within 300 feet. I have a three-year-old, and we are in our backyard all the time, let alone in the winter the quality of air that will be pulling into our house when the heat is on. Increased asthma hospitalizations were associated with living within 650 feet of heavy truck exhaust volume. Asthma and symptoms increased with proximity to diesel trucks exhaust, and the risk was greater within 300 feet. And a San Diego study also found increased medical visits in general for children living within 550 feet of heavy diesel truck exhaust. So approving this special permit will 100% put my child and my family's health at risk, so I ask you that you please deny the special permit. My request for restrictions, if the permit is approved, is removing the loading docks from the residential property side. I would like to know the location of the trash, and also ask that you put restrictions on the pickup time. I would like to also know, see if 18-wheeler restrictions on idling, time restrictions for the morning and weekends, and just any more information or restrictions we can get if it is approved with the loading docks on that side. In the last planning board meeting that we were at, Mr. Palmucci was asked by one of the board members what he would say to his district in Quincy if this project was going in their backyard, and his exact words were, hey, look, believe me, I would not want this in my backyard either. So I have one last question for each board member, and I would like you to honestly think about this. Would you want this in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you. So as a couple, Director Santucci, did you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question, Madam Chair. I just think there's quite a bit of items, Carlos covered quite a bit, but there's additional maybe revisions that, you know, sort of as the public comments are made, I just want to note, based on Ms. Murphy's comments, that there are quite a few conditions in the draft conditions relating to Article 11, which is our environmental standards section of the ordinance, which covers impacts from noise, light, sound, odors, those types of things. And that the, the conditions in the ordinance, excuse me, the conditions in the draft conditions tie operational aspects to the business, to this particular section of the ordinance. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that the privacy fence started at six feet, went to 10, and now we're at 15. And that's going to be raided, similar to soundboard that you would see along the highway. So the whole idea is to essentially create an area of the site that has now been moved much further away from the residential homes in a combination of dense, mature vegetation, additional landscaping on the disturbed-sloped area, plus the 15-foot sound barrier is really kind of, we're trying to create an environment that doesn't allow for noise to penetrate into the neighborhood. And again, we have our environmental standards, that is the measure. While this property isn't in Braintree, it is a residential property, and we would treat it the same as if it was a residential property in Braintree that was receiving noise and making sure that those decibel levels are not exceeded. The location of the loading docks has been shifted. There are conditions in the draft conditions. Mr. Riel, I think, spoke at one of the last meetings, or it might have been Attorney Palmucci, about the opportunity and why they've set the building up this way, is if they cannot attract a single tenant, they could have two tenants in the buildings, and each tenant could have their end in their loading. The conditions talk about if it's a single tenant, that this area not be constructed. So there are things in the conditions that touch on a lot of the components. I've been listening and taking notes over the course of the last four months. We had a couple, I'll call them pow-wow sessions, with our peer review consultants, both Bob Micho, myself, representatives from DPW, and our peer review consultant, really making sure that the comments that we've been hearing over and over again have been addressed in the plans. And, you know, in my opinion is, they've made quite a bit of revision in that particular area, as you can see from the plans that Carlos had shown earlier with the areas and sort of the outline of where they were and where they are now. So if I, if at any point after there's a comment, I just want to try to touch on a couple things, that there was an overview of some revisions, but the plan set is massive, and there's been extensive revisions over the last two months.
Okay, that's helpful. Two items that the speaker had mentioned, asking a question about that I didn't hear you touch base was on the trash location and trash pickup access. So I don't know if the applicant or their engineer could just speak to that as far as it's known. And then, if there is any sort of sense for potential rooftop mechanicals or anything like that, if there is that information now, if you could share that or any intent to locate or screen that away from residential areas? Those were two items I didn't hear touched on.
Sure, I could touch on the trash pickup. We did identify locations on the site as it relates to essentially screened-in trash enclosures. So just as a rule of thumb, all the trash enclosures would be on a concrete slab, they'd have essentially some element of spill protection in them, if there's some incidental leakage or rain that happens to fall in that area that keeps it from just cheap flowing into the parking lot. And they would be fully enclosed and screened as well, so from a visual perspective, they'd be screened in. We have one location at the north end of Building B identified, where we have a dumpster located, as well as the location in the southeast corner of Building A. We acknowledge, and I believe it was touched on in the draft conditions, that ultimately with the tenants, when and if they are identified, we'd be able to work with them and ensure that the trash storage locations that we have identified would meet the demands or the needs that the individual tenants have. So certainly, we'd review that based on the individual tenant needs and upsize those and provide more if we need to. And then the second question, as it related to mechanical equipment, we did find space on the ground, and we did propose areas where we'd have potential generators, as well as some of the equipment and the facilities that would be associated with this kind of a use. So we do have areas located at the ground level for those elements of the project. And as it was mentioned in one of the previous hearings- And as it was mentioned in one of the previous hearings, that the rooftop areas, because we don't know who the specific tenants are yet at this time, it's difficult to commit to specific things like rain gardens or blue roofs on these kind of facilities, which would really box you in, in being able to speak and attract certain types of tenants that may have a need for it. Ultimately, anything that would be up on the roof area would be screened appropriately and would be done in accordance with the current codes, so that it'd meet all the environmental standards, as well as the noise standards for the town ordinance as well.
Great, thank you. And, oh, yes, thank you.
Just touch on a couple of things that were mentioned. I certainly appreciate the comments. And I do want to say that the changes to Building B were made solely as a result of the commentary from the folks on Tommy Marks. I have three kids myself. I understand the concerns that were raised. We've thought long and hard about it. It was not as a result of, you know, any wetlands issues. We thought it was the right thing to do and we pulled it back. You know, development, you have to make some tough decisions, as I'm sure you've seen before. And I think two things that were important to us, and we brought on early on with Beld, was opportunities for a microgrid system here, you know, really islanding this off and incorporating green technology as it becomes available. As you've, as I'm sure you've seen, there was federal legislation passed last week and that technology changes every day as an improving. If these are biotech users, it's difficult to utilize the roofs, unfortunately. We would love to. I think there's opportunities for canopy solar on the parking fields and throughout the rest of the property, as well as some battery storage, which is always a challenge with these projects. And I think frankly, tenants are demanding it and they should. Saves money and it's the right thing to do. And I think overall, you know, it's approximately 20 acres on 130-acre site, and I think we've taken great care to provide both a buffer to the residents on the other side and preserve, you know, 40 acres in the back of the property and build a walking trail. So I think it's something we've taken very seriously. I understand the concerns. I do think, the last thing I'd say is buildings of this size, you know, comparable buildings, we've looked at them, we've done extensive market study. There are loading docks here. This is a very light loading dock building for this size building, a comparable building of this size. I just saw in the market, had 92 loading docks. You know, it's the distribution facility, right? That's a lot of trucks, that's a lot of people coming in and out. We are significantly curtailing potential tenants for this type of building. That would be more in that this is manufacturing, this is light, light truck traffic, and I think that's reflected in the traffic study. So I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions about that, but just wanted to clarify that it is something we've looked extensively at. It's a market demand, it's also something we've taken seriously and, you know, happy to engage anyone if they have any specific questions.
I guess just one follow-up question while you're up here. As it relates to idling in the loading dock areas, do you have the ability to restrict idling? And do you plan to have control over that? And like, what might be ways in which you would implement that restriction? Would it be through signage? Would it be through tenant agreements? Or like, what is your thought on trying to help alleviate concerns for constant idling and diesel generation for trucks that are just waiting in these loading dock areas?
Yeah, so, and we talked about this quite a bit with Melissa, and it's, the Braintree bylaw, the existing bylaw for noise is quite restrictive, probably more restrictive than any tenant would want. I think that goes for all loading docks. And so I think every tenant would need to abide by that, something that we would need to clarify with tenants, and we already have clarified with tenants as part of this. It's not a distribution facility, it's next to a residential area. So I think it's twofold. One, it's compliance with the loading and unloading and noise in the existing Braintree bylaw, which tenants will have to live by and we would have to put in a lease and restrict. And then we've committed to kind of post-occupancy monitoring. And, you know, like, every time you put loading docks in, you lose square footage, you lose usable square footage. So ideally, we would find a single tenant that would find this building attractive, would take 137,000 square feet, would love to come back and eliminate that. There's a lot of cost associated with building that, so we would be incentivized to do it. And so I think, you know, we're trying to gain some flexibility, but I do, and we have appreciated from the beginning, that there is a currently existing restrictive bylaw that we have to live by and tenants will. So we would be on the hook for monitoring that.
Okay, great, that, thank you, that's helpful.
Madam Chair, just for the public, so, I and I were just taking a quick look here at the, we don't have all the sections of the ordinance memorized, but the quiet hours are essentially 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And the ordinance goes into detail and talks about the loading, the unloading, opening, closing, handling of boxes, crates, and goes on and on and on. So we've had very clear dialogue with the applicant about this and have informed them about these sections. We typically put conditions in about idling. I have not included that condition, I just made a note to add that into the conditions. The dumpsters are not near this end of the building. If, Carlos, if you could come up and just, I don't see them on this sheet, but just, well, maybe for Building A.
Building A?
Oh, Building A is, yep, and Building B is, so those are somewhat...
Yeah, could you point them out on the other TV too as well?
Yep, tucked, you know, as far away as possible from that side. But we typically employ those same hours for the trash, which is the 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay.
And nothing on Sunday.
Okay.
So those hours are Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday is quiet time.
Okay. If there is anybody else from the public that would like to make a comment, come on up.
Hi. Hello. My name is Dave Morgan. I live at 40 Tommie Marks Way in South Weymouth. I am concerned about it. So what I'm requesting is that, I don't know about going back to square one, but a MIPA review that looks at the whole combined Mass General and the Banner Park projects in as one, in its entirety. And look at the traffic impact, not just at those two intersections, but, you know, Route 18, and, you know, and West Street and Pond Street, and especially Forest Street is what, you know, it's a nightmare now. So anyways, that, you know, I really haven't heard that there's been significant wetlands review, wildlife review, and that, you know, I think they need to move the building back. I mean, I guess one of the things I hear today is that my definition is significantly and the petition is different, in that, you know, they talks about we added five feet to the fence, they moved the building back, but it looks like it's only like moving about 10 feet. So I would like to see it moved back, you know, more significantly away from the residential neighborhoods. And or split it up into two buildings. I mean, they have 130 acres to work with. So I mean, it's not like they're out of room, that it doesn't have to be right up to it. And then I would hope they looked at, they moved the loading docks a little, but first of all, I have no idea why they need 19 loading docks, where I said before down the street, Star and Sharp S3. So they moved it, so why can't they just put it, instead of on the south side, put them on the west side? You know, one of my main concerns is the water runoff and with the information they have brought tonight, I really can't follow all that drainage type of stuff. But, but tonight too, I heard that it was, the use is going to go from warehousing to R&amp;D. To me, that means less loading docks. So why can't they just get rid of the loading docks in, you know, away from the residential neighborhood, period? I don't think they need 19. I'm not sure where they're getting their information from. I mean, granted, I'm glad it's not 90 loading docks that the gentleman said, that similar projects, same size, 90 loading docks, come on, that's, that's a lot. Deanna stole exactly, I didn't, we didn't share notes, but I had in my hair that Mr. Palmucci stated in a former hearing that I would want, not want this in my backyard, and I'm sure the planning board members would want in their backyard. It's just the building is just too big and too close. I realize that something is going to go here, and I'm all in favor of that, but I just need to, you know, the proximity to the neighbors and the size of the project, I think, is just too big. And that, I'm a pharmacist by training, I'm not a developer or a engineer or a lawyer, and so I don't know what the next steps are. But I think that, you know, I'm not happy with the changes that have been made. I don't think it's been significant enough for me. And as a former employee of Mass General Brigham, I'd welcome them as a neighbor, and only if they address our concerns. And I hope Mass General and Banner Park do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know the applicant had mentioned that they are undergoing a MIPA review. I think staff has some insight or information on that at least, so...
Yeah, very quickly, Madam Chair, and anyone from the applicant team, cut me off if I'm incorrect. There's been a lot of this talking about Brigham and combining, and I need to be very clear that Brigham has been approved, it was approved, it did go through the MIPA process. We're not here tonight to talk about Brigham. That is a completely separate project on a completely different piece of property with a completely different owner. My understanding from my discussions with Mr. Riel and Carlos is that they have talked to MIPA about the filing, and MIPA has advised them that their project is a standalone project, and that's how it will be reviewed by MIPA. So this idea of combining them and reviewing them all respectfully, it's not my call, it's not this board's call, it's nobody's call in this room. They've checked with MIPA, and if I could just, is that in fact the case, Carlos? The direction that they provided you with?
Sure, yeah, that's correct. We did have a pre-meeting with MIPA staff. We asked that specific question, and they did concur because Mass General had gone through that process and completed the process, just because access was essentially going through the property that didn't necessarily link them together. So they did agree that our project is separate and they anticipated it would be viewed that way ultimately when the filing was submitted.
And you said you had submitted to MIPA recently?
So we submitted the first, the first step in the process, as Mr. Riel mentioned, is the environmental justice form. So that was submitted and it starts the process. All the technical submission materials ultimately would be submitted as the next step in that process, which would be the expanded ENF. And as mentioned earlier, because we have gone through such a robust review for traffic, for stormwater, for wetlands, for all these aspects of the project, all the information that we have, we believe would be ready to submit essentially once we hopefully complete the local permitting process, we'd be ready to be in front of MIPA and undergo that review as well, which would include a state-level review of all these same things, which we spent a good amount of time making sure are done appropriately here at the local level.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, if you could just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah Murphy, 77 Tommie Marks Way, Weymouth. Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking the board for listening to us at all the meetings, especially the last one in June. Your comments and suggestions to the developer were compassionate and empathetic to our cause. I'd also like to thank the Banner team for the concessions made. It seems that they have attempted to address all of our concerns, although I feel the strategy was implemented through an inch-to-a-mile approach. The changes to the loading docks do not mitigate light and noise or the reality of tractor-trailers in our backyards. The increased buffer zone is nice, we'd like to see more. I also believe this may have been due to a new wetland acknowledgement, not so much the attempt to accommodate the residents of Tommie Marks Way. I'm also curious about the sound barrier fence, even though I truly believe it will not mitigate any light and noise, I'm curious why it stops halfway across the Orea lot. Again, I'd like to honestly say that I'm appreciative of the efforts and the changes. I hope we can continue down this road as we move forward, as I feel there is still some work to be done. And before I sit down, I'd just like to point out what we just discovered about dumpster locations for Building B. Going back to when we, you know, first requested that we would like to see the loading docks move, you know, the answers we were hearing was that the building was going to be split in half, there was going to be two tenants. Seeing that, you know, each tenant is going to need their own set of loading docks, you would assume that they'd probably need their own trash location too. So, you know, either that means that there is another dumpster location on the far side near Tommie Marks Way in the works, or that, you know, they could get by with one, and, you know, we'd like to know that that's where the dumpster location is going to stay. And also that maybe it's not so significant that they need the loading docks on both sides of the building, just like the trash. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
My name is David Tower, 69 Tommie Marks Way. I want to thank you for listening to us today. Just, I'm going to touch on three things without beating everything else to death, okay? First of all, they talk about trails, and they're into the 40 acres behind them. If they truly are, why don't they donate that land to Braintree Conservation Commission and/or the New England Wildlife Center? Because they say they're not going to develop it, but the peer review suggests the eventual use of the land. So if they are committed to it, commit to it. Second of all, a lot of the issues that we bring up here tonight could be dealt with in a private meeting that they offered to have. They haven't had it with the residents in Weymouth. The planning director in Weymouth asked them to, you know, wanted to schedule it. They said, oh no, we'll schedule it ourselves. So when they stand in front of you and tell you they've had meetings with us, they haven't. A lot of this could be discussed on a more friendly basis without having to come up here and deal with the issues individually. And then last of all, traffic review. I mean, all I heard about was Braintree. What about the Weymouth side of them? Where's the mitigation for that? What are we going to do for the Weymouth residents? I can guarantee you more than half of this traffic is going to go down Colombian Street to Weymouth and West Street to Route 18. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Swain, 134 Mill Street in Weymouth. I'm the sidewalk person, and I still am really confused. I heard them say that they're going to have some funding for sidewalks, they're talking about trails, they're talking about riding your bike to the site. But I don't see this, anybody getting this safely by walking or riding a bike. And I know that maybe offering some funds to do sidewalks doesn't bring sidewalks to the town. Grants can take years. This is all going to happen before maybe the sidewalk happens. Braintree is undergoing a master plan, and I guarantee that one of the first items on your master plan is making Braintree a safe, walkable town. And certainly in this corner of town, it's not safe and it's not walkable. And now we're adding 18-wheelers. So sidewalks need to be addressed. Again, Weymouth doesn't have any mitigation that I see. It's nice that Braintree gets something. The other thing that I have a concern is a 15-foot wall or fence. I imagine that 15 feet's about the size of that curtain over there. And I can imagine the first kid that comes in with a spray paint can and puts graffiti all over this fence. So if we're going to have a fence this high, we're going to have to have an order of conditions that make sure when something happens to this fence, like we get a hurricane or a storm, we lose a piece of it, how is it going to be maintained? Who is going to take care of when a piece falls down or a tree goes through some of it? Is there going to be an argument that they put it up once and then it's never going to happen again? And then what happens when the kids come in and they spray paint or magic marker or draw all over it? So that has to be in some order of conditions that that fence is maintained at a certain level. Now, if you build the fence and maybe put abrevi or make it difficult to get to, it might prevent the fence more. The last comment I'll make is on the engines running, and I know there's ordinances. Weymouth, the street I live on has a truck ban, and every morning the trucks park and then drive down the street. Then they're told not to do it, but we go through it all the time. So it's enforcement. I know we might have an ordinance, but how is the ordinance enforced? Do the people have to keep calling? How do they get the trucks to stop idling? And if you have a tenant who doesn't obey it, then what happens? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Wongum, the planning director for the town of Weymouth, 75 Middle Street. First off, I want to thank the board, the planning board, for the consideration that you've given Weymouth residents. I know this is a Braintree project, obviously, most of the impacts will be felt in Weymouth. So I am much appreciative of the planning board offering the courtesy. The chair, Madam Chairperson, thank you for offering the courtesy. I really appreciate that. So I just want to state a couple of things. You're in receipt of two letters, one that was dated July 25, 2022, addressed to you, Madam Chairperson, from our consulting law firm, my ears in Harrington, which outlined... from our consulting law firm, Mayares &amp; Harrington, which outlined our concerns relative to the parking and the traffic issues. So I just want to make sure you have that. Attached to that letter is our consulting engineering firm, Green International Affiliates, that has done, attached to Mayares' letter is their findings relative to traffic impact analysis. So I'm hoping you have that.
I just want to make sure I have that. I definitely have the Green International letter here, and you said there's an additional letter from the town of Weymouth. Oh, okay.
The green one was attached to one from Ray Mayares.
Looks familiar.
The green memo is dated July 6.
The green memo is July 6.
Oh, I got it.
And the Mayares' letter is July 25.
I found it.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so basically, I'm not going to reread the letter. We hope that is in the record, but we clearly have concerns about the parking, depending on the uses that go into the structures. More warehousing or more research and development or more lab space can increase or decrease. I've heard the developer say they have a reserve of, I believe, additional 144 spaces, if that's correct, on there. But that is a concern to us relative to that issue. And of course, the other issue is the traffic impact analysis. So I heard Braintree's peer review talk about intersection of Grove and Colombian Street, Grove Street. Didn't really hear any mention of Colombian Street in Weymouth, Colombian Street at Forest Street, West Street, West Street at Commerce Way in Braintree, West Street at Mill Street, West Street at Summer Street, and most importantly, West Street at Route 18. From your own reports, 70% of the traffic is going to be coming through Weymouth to get to the site. So I, again, appreciate you allowing Weymouth people to speak on this, but this is a project in Braintree, total impacts on Weymouth. So we really have talked to Brian Palmucci, their attorney, and expressed to him the concerns. He has told me verbally that he will have his traffic consultants, the developer's traffic consultants, look at the issues that were identified in Green's memo dated July 6, which talks about these other intersections and roadways in Weymouth that will be impacted. I have nothing confirmed in writing from him, and that scares the heck out of me. So we are looking for a traffic impact analysis of the streets and the intersections that's outlined in that. Now, people have been saying to us, what does Weymouth want? Well, we don't know what we want because we don't know what the impacts are. How can we say what we want if we don't know what the level of service is going to be and what the solution's going to be? So it's a little bit, what's coming first here, the chicken or the egg? Well, I maintain the chicken is identify these, we've identified intersections. You tell us the impacts that are going to happen from this development. So that's what we're looking for. Once we understand that, then we can talk to them about mitigation. We don't want them to throw $100,000 at us if we don't know what the solutions are going to be. We don't even know the impact. I don't think that's unreasonable to ask on that. Okay. The second letter, which I hope you have, it was dated August 8, and it's addressed to the MIPA office, Turi Kim. And it's basically asking, and I respect what your planning director said, this is not about Mass General Brigham's, this is about this development. But we feel this is a segmented project, meaning both projects need to be looked at together. So we'll have that fight at MIPA when we do that. That's not a fight for here, but we'll have that fight with MIPA. But we feel it should be looked at in the totality. And if it's not looked at in the totality, we at least feel that the Banner Park proposal needs to file an ENF, Environmental Notification Form, on it. So that's the minimum. Now, we asked Mr. Palmucci if he was going to be informing MIPA, and he told us, yes, he was, but he never said when he was, and we asked for a copy of correspondence, and he never gave us anything. So we assumed that he wasn't notifying MIPA, and that's why this letter went out on August 8 to the MIPA, which everyone here was CC'd on. I believe you must have that. If you don't?
I do.
I have a copy of it. Okay. So that's great. So that's where we are with the MIPA process on that. So let me just go back a tiny bit. Mr. Towers alluded to this resident of Tommy Marks Way. So the developer was gracious enough to have a meeting with Weymouth residents at the Weymouth Town Hall, Tuck Library in Weymouth, when the proposal first came out, the original proposal. And we had, I don't know, 50, 60, maybe, I forget how many people there. So they came, they knew they were going to get hammered, and then to Mr. Palmucci's credit, he was very respectful and listened and everything. So then the project changed, called them up and said, we would like you to have a second meeting so you can explain the changes to the residents in Weymouth, so they understand what's going on. Mr. Palmucci said to me, no, we want to work with small groups of residents in Weymouth to explain the project. And that's what he told me. And I checked with residents, and they said there was no small meetings set up with the developer and small group of residents, I would assume particularly on Tommy Marks Way. So that meeting never took place, so we were a little bit upset with that. We were going to have a meeting in the mayor's office. We only had one meeting at the mayor's office in which the developer was in attendance. So I said, let's set up a meeting in the mayor's office. And then Mr. Palmucci said to me, what are you looking for? I said, well, you have the letter from Ray Mayares relative to identify the traffic issues. You understand the issues that are affecting neighborhood on Tommy Marks Way. So he said, no, it's not necessary to have a meeting because I'm going to be addressing with our traffic engineer the traffic impact analysis on more roadways in Weymouth. So we are very suspicious. We need to see things in writing. And I just want to say this. I think this board is a great board. You're protecting the interest of Braintree. You're trying to protect interest in Weymouth. Your first obligation is to Weymouth. I understand that. If I was on the board, that would be it. I appreciate you doing that. But I want to make sure I word this correctly. So my job as a planning director is to make sure that we are satisfied with any mitigation that can happen with Banner Park. And as Braintree will do what it sees fit to make sure this project passes, Weymouth will make sure that its interests are protected, you know, one way or the other. So we are not letting this go. We've spent considerable money on consultants on this, and if we don't have meaningful dialogue with the developer, we'll meet someday somewhere. So I thank you again for all your considerations on behalf of the town of Weymouth.
Thank you. Yep, you may.
I just address a few things there. Mr. Wongum's been a great advocate for the town of Weymouth, as is Mayor Hedlund. I think there was a couple vague threats at the end there and a couple accusations about us not meeting, which I don't quite understand. But I do want to say that we have filed for MIPA. That is a process. Brigham went through their own MIPA process. I don't know what the town of Weymouth's participation was in that. There's considerable traffic associated with that. I understand that. Our traffic report has all of that traffic as background. So effectively, I'm not sure I understand because I'm not a MIPA expert, what the difference is between looking at it together or separate. Our traffic is already included with what Brigham has there. I don't know what Mass General Brigham's plan is. They acquired the site a year ago. I think it'd be a great opportunity to build a medical campus. That is our vision, but we don't control them. So we look forward to working with Weymouth through the MIPA process or otherwise. You know, I think this would be a big first step in us getting all of this peer review comment. And I believe that this board and Melissa and her team have treated the Tommy Marks neighborhood and the town of Weymouth the same way we treat a Braintree neighborhood. I think that bears out in the number of meetings we've had. So we look forward to working with Weymouth. This is not the end of the process, unfortunately for us. We're not going to start building tomorrow. This is a MIPA process. I feel comfortable that we've gone through extensive peer review. Appreciate the diligence, the money and time the town of Weymouth has spent, and we hope that we can work to a resolution because this is great regional economic development that I think benefits everybody. We're not unaware of the impact this has on Weymouth, so we look forward to working through the MIPA process and otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there is somebody behind the screen that I can't see.
Good evening. My name is Yan May from AD Tommy Marks Way. I just wanted to add a comment about the loading docks toward the Tommy Marks Way. When the developers proposed the need of having both left and right side loading docks for each tenants, I just don't understand why can't the planning layout switch to top-bottom tenants and share the loading docks and dumpster all on one side? So...
If you're going to talk, you just have to bring the microphone with you. You can talk and then come up and point, but if you're doing both, just, yep, that'd be great.
So like, for the planning to split left and right, right here for the tenants, I was thinking that maybe that, you know, this can be split in between top and bottom tenants. And since the dumpster is only on this side, maybe both tenants, top and bottom, can share the dumpster and the loading docks all on one side. That can alleviate the disturbances and privacy and, you know, all the pollution that's coming through the Tommy Marks Way. So that is one of my suggestions that I hope it will work for everybody, or, you know, at least that I feel it's better that way for me as a resident living in the Tommy Marks Way. So my second concern is that, just wondering if there's any feedback from the survey on the traffic that affects the Weymouth public school system. I'm just wondering. I didn't hear anything come back about that.
A specific question related to traffic impacts?
Right, right. And then I'm just worried about the kids in the winter months. They have to wait longer than intended to be. Like, they usually have to get to their bus stop or wait early, at least 15, 20 minutes to wait for the bus stop to come. But if there were more volume, more traffic due to the project, more trucks coming through this way, and the system, the public schools are all in that area, I was wondering if the kids might possibly need to wake up earlier and then have to wait for the bus in the cold days to not knowing when the bus will come. So that's another concern for me as well, because I have two kids, one from middle school and one from high school, and we're, there's a lot of kids living in the area. So that's a huge concern for me as well.
Okay, so we could certainly ask the applicant just what is the standard at which the vehicle traffic from this development is monitored against, say, school time traffic, or if there is, I guess, any standard in which that, I guess, would be typically looked at? I don't know if the applicants can speak to that.
Sure.
I think we have someone, if you want us just, they can come up and try to answer that question for you. Just whatever the standard, if there is one, or if there isn't one, just what's typical for that sort of evaluation?
Sure. I mean, good evening, board. We're willing to do any kind of monitoring post-occupancy. I'm not sure if that's the heart of the question for them, but it would come out in that.
Do you, I guess as a follow-up question, is there any, so I'm assuming that post-occupancy monitoring is a pretty straightforward process with certain metrics that you're looking for. Are there any metrics that we should add that would specifically target school traffic impact, like monitoring during a certain timeframe that would capture that? Or any recommendations that you might have?
I mean, my only recommendation would be stretching the afternoon peak hour earlier to 3:00.
Okay.
To capture kind of the going home. You'll have it in the morning, 7:00 to 9:00.
Yep.
Should be along the bus routes time, and you'll be able to see pre and post what the delays were on those specific approaches.
Okay, so we can add that to the condition. Okay.
They're already starting at 3:00.
Okay, so that's...
Yep. Just very quickly, 6:00 AM to 9:00, because some people leave really early, and some kids start school like crazy early, too. And then 3:00 PM to 7:00.
Okay.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. Carol Murphy, 77 Tommy Marks Way. Banner Park has presented these new plans as a result of more wetlands being discovered and required setbacks for the vernal pool. These plans still do not mitigate all of the concerns of the neighbors. There's still potential to pollute a natural waterway that goes against your bylaws, and the threat of flooding properties on Tommy Marks Ways still remains. The issue of a potential walking trail to be established in the buffer zone has not been resolved. Strangers walking close to residential backyard infringes on our right to privacy and impacts on our safety. I'm very happy to hear that the fence has been increased to 15 feet. Up until now, we have been told that it was a wooden fence, but from the information that was garnered here this evening, I believe that you're talking about some sort of a barrier fence similar to that of, that one would find in the highway. Am I correct about that?
I think we did...
I'm just trying to find the condition.
We did discuss this evening a fence that would be similar to more of like a sound attenuating as, along with a visual attenuation.
Right.
I think there may be a condition related to that.
Yeah, I just, I think it might be helpful to read it. This has come up quite a few times this evening. The applicant shall install and maintain a 15-foot-high fence depicted along the northerly and easterly, excuse me, northerly, easterly, and southerly sides of Building B. Said fence shall serve as a visual and audio screen and buffer. The fencing panel construction shall consist of materials that have been reviewed by a mechanical and audio engineer to ensure that the barrier installed does not allow any sound level leaving the loading area to create a violation of the Braintree zoning ordinance, Article 11.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
My next question is whether or not the fencing that will be going across is going to extend across the parking lot. One of the, I believe the initial plan had it stopping at the end of Building B, and I'm just wondering whether or not it's going to extend across the parking lot, so it too will be a visual barrier as well as noise mitigation. Does it go across the parking lot?
I'm trying to highlight it on the plan. It does wrap, I'll do it on the screen first.
Sure.
The other one, does it wrap around the north side of the building, all the way around the backside, it's the way to the back there, so it's going to be sort of maturing, and it wraps around the entire, so it's all, so...
So visually, the parking lot would be blocked?
Correct. The views would be blocked in this direction.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that. Excuse me, does it also?
I hope you could just address your questions through the chair, and then I'll have the, that's all right, just for the record, it's easy for us to, and if you're going to talk, yep, you just gotta, there you go.
I'm a little confused now by what he was saying over here. Does the fence extend over here, or is that going to be part of the natural buffering caused by the trees?
Yeah, Karen, there is, can you hear me okay?
I think it's just for the monitoring.
Everybody use the mic, please. Thank you.
In the middle of the building, we are not proposing to have the sound...
In the middle of the building, we are not proposing to have the sound attenuating fence, just because there's no activity in that portion of the building, so there's nothing to really buffer or screen. That'll just be essentially that the building will be located in that area. And providing essentially a fence there would result in more impact than would be proposed as it is today.
Thank you.
I would then contend that the neighbors would still be able to see the building, particularly in the fall, winter, and spring before the trees and the leaves are there in order to enhance the buffering. So, that would be a concern. I submit that the fencing should continue all the way around that building, and that should be a consideration. The noise factor from air filtration has never really been addressed, and now that they're talking about, at some point in time, I believe they were talking about increasing the size of Building A. And if that's the case, then we're now talking about more noise being caused by a larger building. So, I think that that's something, of course, that is included in your bylaws and needs to be taken into consideration. Air quality is still a question, as has been brought up a number of times. We've asked repeatedly that the loading docks be moved, and we've been repeatedly told that that could not be done. As you can see, this has come up so many times, it is a major issue for the neighborhood and really needs to be given serious consideration. I've attended these meetings all during the spring. I've watched this board pay incredible attention to detail on the applicants put before them. I've watched you question the kind of curbing a bank would be putting in, the installation of a fence when it only touches a few feet of a conservation area, the placement of a dumpster at a veterinary urgent care facility. I just hope that you are as concerned about air quality, noise pollution, the tremendous impact on traffic in the area, the impact on the privacy of residents, the potential flooding of homes, the potential pollution of a natural waterway, and the impact on the value of homes in our area. I hope you will do your due diligence when it comes to this huge project and its impact on Braintree and Waymouth, for we're the ones who have to live here, not the developers. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to come up and add any comments or questions this evening? Thank you very much. So, we do have before us this evening a staff report that does include draft conditions, which some of them have been discussed this evening. I think we've been making some modifications to some as a result of this evening's conversations. You know, as a board, I'd like to open it up to comments and questions, and we can deliberate over this before us. And just a reminder, any activities this evening, any voting, we would just be doing, whether or not we wish to keep the public hearing open or closed as a result of what we've heard this evening and what's before us in the draft conditions, and then potentially any motions on the conditions this evening. So, with that, does the, I would ask Director Santucci-Razi to maybe give us an overview of the staff report and the draft conditions before us this evening.
I'd love to, Madam Chair. As the board can see, I don't know what we're looking at here, thirty-two pages, so, a lot of information has been presented by the applicant this evening, and from the various testimony that we've heard over the last six months or so. I have been taking diligent notes and noting things and having very constructive, or at least in my opinion, very constructive dialogue with the applicant team, and made several recommendations, as you can see, by the plans this evening. So, with all of our staff reports, draft conditions, we have the listing of all the record documents, as well as our peer review reports. The staff report sort of section, all of the items that were raised by the staff have been addressed by the applicant. Several of them are conditioned as well. And then we get into the findings. Extensive findings have been prepared for review and consideration by the board. Those are the special permit criteria in the zoning bylaw. That's Section 135, 503I. The parking has been looked at in extreme detail. There was some comments this evening relative to parking. I conducted a complete analysis over using the zoning bylaw requirements for both research facility and office, as well as light manufacturing and warehouse. Also looked at some numbers that our peer review consultant had shared on some projects that he's working on, and also looking at the ITE. And basically, all, regardless of which sort of category you fall into, the numbers, the parking, excuse me, the parking requirement varies from about three hundred and sixty-three spaces to four hundred and twenty-four spaces. And as noted on the plans, they're constructing, I believe, four hundred and fifteen spaces and putting a hundred and forty-four in reserve. So, we're looking at about five hundred and fifty-six parking spaces available to this development, which far exceeds any of those analysis. Again, and using ITE is sort of the industry standard. The planner always loves empirical data because it's been tested. It's been, it's been something that's local, that people can relate to. Like I said, we have that from our peer review consultant. So, the parking has been beyond adequately addressed, in my opinion. We have the third section, which relates to public and private water supply and drainage methods. We have our peer review report. That's all been vetted. The Conservation Commission had draft conditions that were going to be reviewed and considered by the commission last week. Again, they didn't have a quorum. I don't want to predict what, how a board is going to vote, but that was, that was the route that the Conservation Commission was going. We also have discussed the water distribution to the site, and we have received comments from the water department, and we've also received some comments from the sewer department that's addressed in the draft conditions as well. Then we get into our sort of environmental standards, which deal with off-site impacts from glare, noise, vibration, heat, smoke, and odor. Again, made some basic findings. Worked very closely with Carlos on really honing in on the lighting plan and asked him to make additional revisions beyond the revisions that were previously made. Really, I mean, we're looking at like cutoff levels, a hundred feet interior to the property, which is substantial. There was a comment about things not being substantial, but typically we look for that zero cutoff at the property line. So, we're pulling every, everything that we typically look to not happen at the property line and spill over to the property. We've taken that, and we've pulled it all way back, or at least my recommendations, which they've done, is to pull it all way back. Dumpsters have been provided. The findings require for that. Screening and buffering, there is substantial vegetation out here. Not including the areas around the buildings where, it's about forty acres of buffering on this site. Massive, massive areas that have been not touched and are referenced here in conditions related to the trail network and conservation restrictions going forward in those areas. In addition to that, there's quite a bit of landscaping shown on the landscaping plans. And then finding number eight talks about economic effect and general compatibility and harmony. And findings in that section talk about this use in the promotion of life science uses in Braintree and within the life science corridor. Then we get into the conditions. We have our boilerplate conditions, which are standard for all our projects. We have conditions related to the Braintree Electric Light Department, municipal license and inspections. So, the departments all comment. They give us their comments, and we incorporate them into conditions, plus about sixty or seventy additional ones that I've added as well. Drainage and erosion controls, it's, excuse me, its own entire section. Then we get into parking circulation and access, where we quantify the parking requirements, where we put requirements on the circulation, as well as wayfinding, aisle widths, emergency access, the loading, all of those things. And here, whole section on transportation, where we reference all of the record documents. We reference the building sizes. We reference the mitigation packages. We reference the TDM measures that will be, excuse me, incorporated by the tenants. And then we also talk about the traffic monitoring. There was a comment this evening about traffic monitoring. We're going to do monitor six months after. We'll do an AM peak period, which we've done six AM to nine PM, and a PM period as well. All of that data is then plugged into the same exact tables, and analysis is run that was projected. So, this is what you said was going to happen. This is what's really happening, and we make an evaluation of that as well. We've included funds. We typically review the monitoring reports in-house. We also include a contribution of funding from the applicant. In the event that myself and the town engineer need additional help, the applicant will give us money. We would hire Bob Michio again to help us review these, to make sure that everything is performing how it was predicted to perform. We have also a condition in here about MEPA, and that they will be required to go to MEPA, and they'll obtain their Section 61 findings. We have a whole section on landscaping. We have a section on special conditions, which talks about the trails and the requirement for the construction of those trails. We have a condition about the dog park, which will be a public dog park that will be permanently maintained by the applicant. That's about a half acre, plus the twenty-two parking spaces. We, and then we get into our construction operational conditions. And then, excuse me, construction operational, and then ongoing operational. I put blasting conditions. I don't think there's any need to blast out there, but we include those just in case. And then also fire department and water and sewer. So, there's about eighty-four conditions and about ten pages of findings. We've spent a lot of time looking at this, reviewing this, double-checking this, making lists down to add this to the plans, take this off the plans. Carlos provided me with an update at four-thirty today. I told him I would need those plans by tomorrow. Again, very sort of me, and I think the board knows my sort of nitpicky style. The applicant knows it very well now, too. So, those plans are in hand. Those plans are in front of the board this evening. The notes that I took during the testimony, Madam Chair, was adding the seven AM to eight PM hours on the trash, as well as, we do have an idling condition that we've used in previous permits. That is not in here, and that will be added as well. So, the staff has presented these to the applicant. I was able to meet with the applicant to review these conditions. I want to thank them for their time and sort of being able to kind of talk through these things, me explaining sort of, this is what it means here in Braintree. This is how this act, this condition applies and doesn't comply, excuse me, applies and doesn't apply. And then also just being able to have dialogue around that with the applicant. These have been submitted to the board for a while, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the board members have, or if I have missed anything that the board members feel need to be included. But this is a pretty voluminous document, and hopefully it's satisfactory to the board members. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Enough talking out of me this evening. Member McComme, comments, questions, thoughts on this evening's additional commentary and the draft conditions. Floor is yours.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to say that since our last meeting until now, I'm happy to hear that we've had some modifications, more mitigation, some rethinking of loading docks, building size, so on and so forth. I appreciate that. I think that helps the process. They may not all be perfect, but I think, I think there's been a lot of additional thinking that's gone in, and of course, staff has added their comments, and a lot of that is reflected in the conditions. So, I appreciate some of those updates and upgrades. My first question pertains to if there's any update in terms of any potential clients that might be moving in here. There, I know, I understand that there was an extensive marketing study, but has anyone expressed an interest yet in this property?
Yeah, I think it's difficult to market an unpermitted project, of course, but we have had, we are out in the market with colliers. They've had some success with these type of projects. So, these larger buildings, and I think you've seen it, most recently, the building that Hillco did, which is now fully leased, larger CGMP biotech buildings are hard to come by. You know, it's a relatively new kind of asset class. These are specifically designed for those type of tenants. We've had discussions with larger groups, the type of groups that would take a building of this size or more established. So, probably your public biotech companies. That market's been a little disrupted over the last, you know, five, six months, just kind of where it is, but there's quite a bit of interest. And I think it's desirable space right now. Braintree over the last few months and the South Shore generally has had a lot of momentum with this space, particularly with the project at the mall that was approved. So, we were out at Bio in San Diego, and that's every biotech company in the world that's there. And, you know, we're talking about this project and all the benefits. And I think once, you know, hopefully this gets approved, and we get through MEPA, and we work through issues with Waymouth, our expectation is that we'll have this leased before we're under construction.
Okay. And so, I'm getting the impression that you think this could be a single tenant use?
That'd be great for us. You know, I think it's very difficult and expensive to pursue a speculative development as we're witnessing here, you know, just in terms of, without any certainty where the market's going to be. The goal is to always get a single tenant, particularly one that, I think in this market, from what we've seen at other projects, everyone's looking at their next hundred thousand square feet, particularly biotech companies or some of these emerging growth companies. You know, they need a hundred thousand square feet now, but they'd like to do a hundred, you know, they think their next hundred and twenty thousand square feet, they want to grow into it. That's the nature of the conversations we've been having. So, my expectation is that, you know, that use, really, it's kind of two different sizes. And that's why we keep talking about two tenants, and why I keep saying I'd love to remove the loading docks in the back, because I would. It's expensive to lease the two tenants in a building. You have to subdivide. You have to deal with all the different mechanical issues. But those, but these uses right now, really, in the sixty thousand square feet space, that's kind of your middling biotech company, middling manufacturing company, or this hundred and thirty-seven-ish thousand square feet. So, I would think, and how we've approached it is, you know, working with a bigger company that has a vision to expand, taking one building and potentially looking at taking the second.
Okay. I have another question for you, sir, but if I'm correct, the director mentioned that if a smaller-sized tenant moved in, then we have the ability to make an adjustment in some of the features of the building, such as reducing the loading docks. Did I hear that correctly?
Member McComme, it was actually if they get a single, let me just double check. It's Condition 41. In the event that Building B is occupied by only one tenant, then all efforts shall be made to reduce or eliminate the loading doors, bays, and area on the south end of the building.
Okay. I think that's an excellent addition and is reflective of what we're trying to do, which is to protect everybody in this environment. So, my other question, sir, is, I think it came up tonight, early on Attorney Palmucci mentioned that forty acres or thereabouts was going to be donated to Braintree. So, could you update us? So could you update us on that? I've heard, I've heard different stories about it.
Sure. So Melissa drafted a condition, which, you know, they pushed really hard on. We met with the mayor, and I think we've talked a lot about that. And so there's a condition that prior to, you know, any work being done on this property, that we enter into an agreement that has the conservation restriction and has the land. If it were a small piece of property and there weren't a lot of issues to work through, I think we could identify that particular piece or an edge of the property. We've surveyed all that area. There's significant uplands there. It was slated for development under TRICON, so this we view as, you know, as a huge concession for the project. So prior to any occupancy or prior to a building permit, there will be an agreement in place. A lot of risk on that on our part, in that we don't know what that agreement's going to say and how hard we're going to dig in. But we feel like everyone's been reasonable to work with and understand what we're trying to do. We have entered into an agreement with Nogal Wildlife Center. They would have a seat at the table and help build and maintain the trails and the open space. The folks that run that group know that area better than we could ever know it. So I think they'd be a great advocate and group to have at the table, not the only one. And so in our meetings with the Conservation Commission, it was whether we worked through a land trust or whether we worked directly with the Conservation Commission, kind of the trade-offs of that. But that's a condition that's in there that we are willing to live with, given, you know, the scope of this project and our shared desire to consolidate this development and not continue to revisit this down the road. It's not our desire to chip away at this property over 15 years and continue to try to grow it. We're comfortable with this and think it's a responsible use of the land.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have another question related to traffic. And I noted that the director mentioned that there were going to be somewhere between 363 and 424 spaces, 118 in reserve. So my question is, when we set out to do traffic monitoring, what's going to be our benchmark in terms of the number of vehicles per day, or however we measure it, that we're going to establish so that we know? I think I saw it in the materials, somewhere about 10% above that. So we know when we're going to hit, you know, some number that we need to step back and take a look at things.
Yes. If I may, through the chair, to Member McComme. So there's two separate things. There's the parking, and then there's traffic monitoring. And they are very distinct and separate. The parking and the concern about there's not enough parking has been handled with this, with this, it's our reserve parking. So we have 144 spots in reserve in the event that there is a need for additional parking. The traffic study in the update that was done on May 17th has quantified 50,000 square feet out of the, plus or minus, out of the development program to research facility R and D. They've run the numbers on that. They presented those vehicle trips, both daily, peak hour, and they've built it into the build and the no build level of service analysis. So what we will get on the traffic side is basically an almost identical report, but it will be a real-time report. Instead of saying, we think there's going to be 32 cars that turn left between 8:30 and 9:30, it will be actual monitoring derived from real counts. And then they'll be plugged into the software, and then we take what we approved and what's actually happening, and we compare that. In my discussions with our peer, Mr. Micho, we used to use somewhat interpretive terms in those conditions, substantial, and, you know, those words have different meanings to people. And Mr. Micho has shared with me that sort of the industry standard is if you go up by 10, that's when you really start to need to drill down. Now, 10% increase distributed amongst all the intersections might be absolutely negligible, and you might not see that. 10% all-to-one turning movement or all-to-one intersection could in fact result in a decrease of level of service below what was projected. So that's really what we would be looking for.
Okay. The only thing I didn't see, and I don't know if Mr. Micho knows, was I was looking for the number.
Which number?
You know, trips, trips per day or during that time period. So what would be the benchmark?
Okay.
So that we would know if we're, you know, above that.
Okay.
I didn't see that in there.
Well, we have it. It's referenced in the report. Let me just grab it right here. So the May 17th report talks about a daily volume of 1,774 trips, a weekday morning peak of 214, and a weekday evening peak of 243.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member McComme. Member Crowe, any comments or questions on the application and the draft conditions?
I had a question. I wanted to see through the chair if I could ask of Planning Director Luongo. The question, you had commented in the traffic report that was presented, talked about the traffic review that's in our Braintree bylaw. And my question had to do with the condition we were just discussing of the post-monitoring with the 10%. And I guess the first part of the question was, I see in our bylaw, we have this intermunicipal section that would provide an avenue for us to require mitigation on adjacent towns when the project affects them. And so I was wondering if Waymouth had adopted that, and if so, whether the ability for us to go back and require additional amount of mitigation if there's more than a 10% difference in what's being presented here? Whether that provides Waymouth any comfort, or you had any other thoughts on that?
So I guess my question is, can, can the board go back and amend conditions on a special permit if, if the monitoring shows? First of all, I'm assuming the monitoring is going to include West Street?
So the, the-
I'm not sure what the monitoring's going to include.
Right.
So-
The monitoring is the same intersection that we're studying in the reports. It's a one-for-one.
So what does that mean? West Street or not West Street? I, I, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't have a memory.
Yeah, the, the, right. So I guess-
My only question is, are you monitoring roadways in Waymouth to assess the impacts? That, based on, my concern is, based on the traffic report, that the majority, maybe 70% of the traffic is going to enter and exit through Waymouth. So that's, that's the concern that we have. And if there's an ability for the board to claw back and come back and say, okay, I don't think there is, once you, you set a special permit.
If I may, we can go back and we can require additional mitigation. The answer to that is yes. But the, the question is, is what's going to be monitored is what was studied. So West Street and Route 18 and all these other things, those are not in the study. So we only monitor what was included in the study so that we can actually compare.
Right. But we do have, the map does have turning for how many vehicle trips are planning to go down West Street into Waymouth and go down Columbia. And the Forest Street intersection is included. And then just, you can, if there's, right now, we've got, what's this, weekday morning? So we've got 55 trips coming into the site through Columbia. So instead of 55, if that turns into 80, then I, I think there's an argument. So I don't know what it looks like and what the post-monitoring would produce.
I mean, it's not an easy, it's, it's just like, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, I mean, we don't, Waymouth, I just want to be clear, we don't want to stop the project. You know, it's going to be good for Braintree, it'll be good for Waymouth in some respects with employment opportunities, if we can try to really mitigate these serious impacts. We, we, we don't want to stop the project. We've had a cooperative relationship with Braintree and Waymouth Landing, and that's turned out successful. So we have a history of working with each other on it. I understand your responsibilities. I respect them as well. But we are a little bit frustrated with all due respect to the developer. We just, you know, we, I don't know how to, you know, address it. As Melissa said, you're not going to be looking at those roadways. So I don't know how you can monitor them and what you put them in as a condition, I guess.
Okay. That was my, just my thought as you were talking, that the proposed Condition 50 does say that if the 10% is reached, then the special permit board can require additional traffic mitigation, either onsite or offsite. And so it's not set with any particular area. It seems likely we would focus on Braintree, considering that we are Braintree. But I do think that that provides an avenue if there's a-
I mean, if we can come, if we can come to agreement with the developer, you know, after you, you make your decision, I'm assuming tonight, and we can come to an agreement, well, certainly. It depends on the developer willing to make the effort to come in, sit with us, look at us, and, and, you know, we, obviously, we have time to do that once a decision is made. We're willing to sit down with the developer to figure out what he's going to study for us for a traffic impact analysis and, and understand what the issues are going to be. So if, obviously, the board's got to do what the board's got to do. We will still try to reach out to the developer during that period of time. Hopefully, he'll reach out to us on it.
And I think just too, to briefly add, the MIPA review will likely have, there will likely be comments and things that need to be addressed that shake out through the MIPA review related to that. And then also, Condition 52 references the environmental impact report with Mass DOT. So that road is, you know, state jurisdiction. So I think, you know, there'll be additional review and commentary on that. So I think there's lots of eyes working on this. We have, you know, our review, but it's like one step in the process. And I appreciate the town of Waymouth's concerns and the issues that you brought to our attention this evening. But, continue, Member Crowe.
That was my question for you. Thank you, thank you for your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's really my only question.
Okay. Member Grove, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Since there's going to be additional reviews, I'm not sure what the rush is. Why don't we wait for these other reviews to come through and find out what they have to say? The other thing that I have been opposed to is the loading docks on the, on the southerly side. If those could be relocated to the westerly side of the building, they're going to, the building itself will offer protection from the lighting and the noise, and you won't be creating a, an attractive nuisance with a 15-foot fence on the other side. This is going to require maintenance and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Grove. Just a follow-up question to Member Grove's commentary on the loading dock. I know we've talked extensively about the modifications and the limit to which modifications are possible. Just if the applicant could confirm that there was not the ability to shift the loading dock. I think we've kind of talked about that, but I just want to make sure that, that consideration from Member Grove is addressed, just as how the plans stand tonight.
Sure. Madam Chair, Member Grove, we did look at a number of different modifications as we were developing the revised plans that you have in front of you here today. We did look at loading docks originally with the project, as well as recently on the westerly side of the building. I think just some of the limitations that we looked at and had to work around are essentially providing the setbacks to the wetlands along the westerly and southerly edge of the roadway there. Ultimately, in order to be able to park a truck up against the building, you also need roughly double that space for the maneuvering, to be able to back up and get into it. So there just isn't the space available along that side of the building to be able to not only have a truck be able to park up along the edge there, but to be able to maneuver in and out of those spaces. So that unfortunately wasn't an area that was able to sustain that kind of an access in that location. Ultimately, both ends of the buildings work best, both from an internal circulation with the functionality of the building, as well as being able to provide access up against the building at both ends of the site. So we did look at it. Unfortunately, it didn't fit along that side of the building.
Thank you for that response.
Thank you.
Member Grove, did you have any other comments or questions?
No, ma'am.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Along the same line there, I'm just looking at the map and wondering, could the whole building shift to the north, I guess it is, to the, to the left? And it looks like there's room there for, to move it further away from, from Tommy Marks.
That also was one of the other elements that we looked at. At the very northerly end of the site there, one of the limitations that we looked at, which is why we actually reduced the square footage of Building B, instead of just shifting it as part of these changes, was there's a wetland just north of that loading area as well. So any sort of shift in that direction would push us closer to that wetland that's located on the property. And also the property line that you see there, that is the MGB parcel, which is under separate ownership to the north. Any further shift of the building in that direction, left on the page, would also bring us too close to that property line, and it would impact our ability to have efficient parking in that location. So there was a number of factors that limited us from being able to have an efficient design by shifting the building further north in that area.
Yeah. Well, it just looks like there's room to move it a little bit anyway, maybe 50 feet or something. And as it is, the, that piece on the north at the end is, there's no butters that would care, and, you know, the space wouldn't be used.
I think just unfortunately, it doesn't work with the angle of that property line that we have on the MGB parcel. It makes it challenging to have good circulation in that area.
It's like, I just want to add one thing that's not showing on these, is the extra parking in case they need it.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah, to the director's point there, essentially, that's, that's the reserve area also for that additional parking, should it be needed. So ultimately, any shift there, you know, we want to be able to have that space as that, you know, backup parking, should it be needed at some point in the future. We don't anticipate it will, but certainly a consideration.
Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. The residential impacts of the project have started to be addressed. And one of the things that I hear from the residents is that there's uncertainty of what this will look like. And is it something, you could provide a rendering or something from the perspective from Tommy Marks, to give the residents a better sense of what this fencing will look like and what the landscape would look like?
We did provide cross-sections. That was one of the comments that came up with the staff report with the last iteration, was just to show cross-sections, both running north, south, along the building, so it's east, west as well. So in those cross-sections, I don't have a slide show in those, but it's in your packet there.
Okay. I guess more similar to like the beginning of your presentation, where you showed the building from the front, and it's more like of a realistic presentation of it?
Sure. We actually did work with the, the project architect, and we were looking at what would be able to represent that. Unfortunately, the renderings we prepared showed trees. It was challenging to show the building without having kind of a top-down aerial view, just because of the natural buffering that's going to be there. So it, you know, we felt that that wouldn't really serve much of a purpose. The cross-sections show the relationship a little bit better as it relates to the building and the elevation changes and the vegetation to remain.
Okay. Thank you. And then as far as the transportation impacts, the two communities are very much interconnected. And I think that we do need to have a better understanding, specifically Colombian at Forest and Maine at West, because those impacts are in Waymouth, but they're going to spill over to Braintree as well, and are going to be felt on both sides. And I don't think that that's been addressed. It came up in the peer review, I believe it was from Green. And could you speak a little bit more towards that?
I guess just to kind of give you the quick rundown on how we, how we developed our, our study area. You know, I didn't personally write the scope for it, my boss did. But one of the things that we looked at was what MGB's impacts- boss did, but what, one of the things that we looked at was what MGB's impacts would be, and those were the four that were included in that report, um, so that was our starting point, if, if we want to go further, that's certainly something that I can discuss, um, down the road with, um, with the town staff and with Chris and...
Okay, I, the, the intersection at Forest, um, really is going to have an impact, and it's closer, and then I think because of the traffic coming off of Route 3 and the use of 18, those impacts are going to be felt on both sides, by both communities, and because there are so many people who go from Braintree to Weymouth and Weymouth to Braintree, uh, those do need to be looked at.
Understood.
Thank you. And then, um, one of the other points that a resident brought up tonight was about the trails, and I wouldn't want there to be any additional burden on the residents specifically of Tommy Marks, um, by the trails, um, and, and having, you know, people closer to their homes than, you know, were never there before, and I think that the, the trails are, um, you know, an important thing that the developer is doing, but their location, um, is important, and making sure that we don't put any additional burden on those residents, thank you.
Thank you, Member Connolly, um, I guess as a follow-up question, point of clarification, um, because we have been, um, listening to several meetings and going through several peer reviews and looking at lots of documentation, so the, I, I guess an overall question to kind of piggyback on some of the comments, um, made by a fellow board members, also concerns shared, um, just this evening with regards to the scope of the traffic study, there is something related to MIPA, something related to maybe something with Mass DOT, as noted in Condition 52, I guess I'm asking for an overview of appropriateness of evaluation of intersections in both Braintree and in Weymouth for what's been studied to date, when you're looking at a project that's near a town line and the application is in Braintree, what is the typical evaluation outside of, like, Braintree limits and neighboring communities, and, like, how do, how does that play into the role of the town of Braintree versus the role of Weymouth versus our board, and how that's all evaluated? Um, is that maybe something our, the applicant's engineer or our peer review engineer, um, can help us with?
Sure, I, um, I mean, for me personally, when I, when I scope a project, I look at where the impacts are going to be, um, under the initial development that we were originally looking at back in February, um, that did include all those four intersections, um, one of the guidelines for Mass DOT is anything that's going to generate 100 additional trips at the intersection or result in a 5% increase, um, that was captured with our initial, um, with our initial study area, um, with the new development, there were a couple more that will be discussed with MIPA during the MIPA process, um, that they may direct us to look at, I mean, it's a, um, it's a guideline for Mass DOT, it's not a, a sort of stet-in-stone law, um, but during the MIPA process, they, they will look at the scope and they will review it on their end.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, did I, I don't know if Mr. Bishot, if you had anything to add or, um, could provide any additional insight on this?
Sure, um, our very first question in peer review was whether the project would be subject to MIPA, and, and the reason we asked that was for the exact reason the board is asking the same question, to what extent, um, would a project have impacts in adjoining communities, and how would those impacts be accounted for, um, that's why MIPA exists, um, and, and so, uh, as Andy had pointed out, um, the typical protocol in establishing a study area would be the level of traffic increase on a proportional basis to area intersections, and that 5% rule that he mentioned is typically the rule that's applied, um, whether they're Braintree locations or Weymouth locations, uh, and we're pleased that the project will be going through MIPA because we think it's appropriate, and that there are other gateway locations, particularly along West Street, that might be affected by the project, that are really beyond the technical purview of the town of Braintree, so MIPA provides the forum, if you will, for multiple commenters on the impacts of a project, and there'll be a direct benefit to Weymouth as a result of that process. Ultimately, um, even some of the mitigation actions that we've identified within Braintree will still be subject to Mass DOT, uh, review and approval through that same process, so there are overlapping interests here that are all encapsulated within the, the, the MIPA process.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? Uh, Madam Chair, um, I know 18's under state jurisdiction, or is, uh, West Street under state jurisdiction as well?
Uh, West Street's a town street.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I just, I don't really have too much additional comments, um, the changes that have been made, um, on the south side of the building, pulling, uh, eliminating some square footage, the hopeful possibility that one tenant would be in that building and we would not need the loading docks, um, on the south side, I think is a good add, um, and creating more of a, preserving more of the natural buffer on that south side for the abutting neighborhood, um, I think is also a good modification, whether or not it's enough, if I lived in that neighborhood, I mean, it's always a struggle when you're behind vacant, when you own property behind vacant land, and you, you know, as a board member who's also a registered professional civil engineer in the state of Massachusetts and working on pro, projects like this, there's a, there's a lot to balance, and I don't take a decision on a project like this in my role as, as Chairman of this board, or whether or not I live next to the project, I take very seriously, um, and I try my best, and I think a lot of, the board tries their best to balance all the things, the town's requirements against the developer's rights, against, you know, to hopefully have a successful project that, um, can be good for all communities, um, I think a lot of the draft conditions, I think, really got to addressing some of the concerns, again, to the extent that we did enough, um, you know, I hope, I hope we are, are doing a lot more, I think the MIPA process and the other permitting process, um, we'll be able to do a broader review, um, regionally, so that's really good, I, I, I think that's great for this project. One comment I wanted to make specifically on a condition that one of, um, one of the residents made with regards to the, um, monitoring during school times, um, that was the Condition 48, I think the afternoon monitoring started at 3:00, um, I think maybe we should have it start at maybe 2:00 or 2:30, I think some school traffic starts a little sooner than 3:00, and then it does note that it would be conducted on a Tuesday and Thursday, if we could just add that those would not be holiday, like, a holiday week or a time when school would be out of session, um, not in the summer, um, just to make sure we capture that, and...
Be like, not on school vacation?
Yeah, just to make sure that school is most likely in session during that monitoring, and this notes a six-month, um, monitoring, I think in the peer review, it was a six-month and a one-year, so I think the applicant had agreed to a six-month and a one-year, I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to confirm that, and if it's going to be both to include that.
Uh, yes, we, um, we, we had suggested that monitoring occur within the six months of initial occupancy of the building, um, and it's not uncommon to have a second monitoring period, um, you know, once the building and the, and the operation has matured, if you will, um, but I, I will say that, um, as the project is undergoing MIPA review, that the state through this, uh, Mass DOT, through the Section 61 finding process, will obligate monitoring to occur for a longer period of time, actually, um, you know, up to five years, so, um, we believe that at a minimum, the six-month, uh, period, presuming that the buildings are substantially occupied, would be appropriate, and then, um, we would certainly advocate, uh, for a follow-up, you know, one year from that point.
I think in the peer review letter that you had on the transportation monitoring program, the applicant did respond that they would do post-occupancy monitoring at initial period within six months of occupancy, and subsequently within one year following the initial monitoring period.
Correct.
So, like, six months and then 18 months?
Yeah.
Okay. So that will be revised to, uh, the 3:00 PM, will go to 2:00 PM, um, these six months plus, and 18 months, and then, um, not during, um, the school year, and we typically say, it's almost industry...
Not during school vacation, yeah.
Yeah, and they, they don't typically monitor in, like, July and August either, there's kind of like industry standards around that, um, but I can add that in to just make it a little bit stronger.
Thank you.
So if six months falls in, in August, we'll say do it in September, school's back in session, everyone's off the beach, everyone's, you know, back to their...
Yeah.
Normal, normal grind, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any further comments, I think I covered them all, or members of my board did, so, so we have, um, I don't know what, what the board wants to do this evening, um, we certainly have, um, talked about a lot of material tonight, and we do have, um, some draft conditions, whether or not anybody, um, feels like, you know, making a motion on the draft conditions before us, or something else, I think we need to, as a board, um, choose some sort of direction this evening, um, I guess if anybody has any thoughts on that or wants to make a motion or something else, Director Santucci-Rosi, did you want to add something?
Nope, I was just, nope, I have a correspondence.
I thought I saw you.
No, 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 I was adjusting my mic.
Yeah, we do have cor, we do have correspondence, um, three ac, uh, I guess actions we could take tonight is, um, would be to close a public hearing, we would have to enter into correspondence and make a motion, those are the three things we can do this evening, or of course, um, if there was, um, the desire to continue to another hearing for additional information, I think we would just want to be specific what additional information we need, um, or path, so we don't, you know, we have kind of a process moving forward that, that we can do. Anybody have any thoughts?
Do, if we make a motion to close the public hearing, do we need to enter the correspondence first, should I?
I don't, we can do it in any order.
It's fine, it's just the, it's just, the, only the board is considering it, so it's fine.
Okay, um, then I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, and just, uh, for record, um, we are the voting members this evening, just to confirm, Member Grove, Member Kent, Member McComme, myself, and Member Crowha, and Member Connolly's participating as our alternate member, um, okay, so we have a motion to close the public hearing, and a second by Member McComme, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
So we have, uh, Member Grove, nay, who was aye? Okay, I couldn't hear as clearly, sorry, um, all right, so we have a motion, so the public hearing is closed, that leaves, um, a motion to enter into the record the correspondence, and also a motion on the matter.
Uh, so I would do a motion to enter the correspondence.
That's through August 9th, is this the most up-to-date list?
Yes, today, yep.
Second.
Second by Member McComme, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
And then, uh, I'll make another motion, but I, I just want to add first that I do, I didn't mention it earlier during the questions, but I do appreciate everybody coming out and providing the feedback, I do think that it produced a better project and more consideration with the fence and the trees, and I understand the frustration with this happening next to the neighborhood where there hasn't been a development in a long time, I'm looking at the application and our responsibility under the zoning ordinance, which I think needs a wholesale review for a bunch of reasons, but we're required to look at what the ordinance prohibits, allows, and requires, and in this particular case, there's only a 30-foot setback required to that property line, and we have 108 feet, and we've had a lot of consideration given, and we do have a responsibility, both to the community, but also to the applicants and owners of properties, to take a look at a proposed project under the ordinance, and I think that the developer has done a good job of going beyond what the ordinance requires in presenting their application, and so for that reason, I'm going to make a motion to approve the project under the conditions drafted by staff, the thorough conditions drafted by staff, and the three modifications that we discussed on the record tonight, the idling, the trash, and the, um, the monitoring periods.
We have a motion by Member Crowha, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Member McComme, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
So we have four aye, one nay. That is, that's it from us, um, that is an approval with the draft conditions discussed this evening, um, I guess follow-up with staff on the, um, next steps, um, beyond our board this evening.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to ask town solicitor to come to our next meeting to discuss terms of office, uh, the reason for this is I, I question, I brought it up before, the unlimited, uh, membership of the planning board members, and what brings me to this is that the, uh, the Chapter 189 of 2005, which created the charter for the town, Section 1-4, the powers of the town, subject only to the express limitations on the exercise of any power or function by a municipality, a municipal government, in the Constitution or general laws of the Commonwealth, it is the intention and purpose of the voters of Braintree, through the adoption of this charter, to secure from the, themselves and their government all the powers possible, now, with that in mind, that, that the town, the...
Member Grove, I just, not to cut you off, is this specifically relevant to the motion we just acted on, or is this something we can...
Excuse me?
Is this something specifically relevant to the motion we've acted on, and we have other meetings scheduled, I, I would like to give you time to raise this, but I'm just wondering if we should do it after the public hearings?
I'll just, I'll finish in a second here.
Okay.
Section 81A, uh, is, uh, the establishment of the planning board, when a planning board is first established, or when the terms of members of the planning board established under Section 70, serving as members of the planning board under this section expire, as the case may be, the members of the planning board under this section shall be elected or appointed for terms of such length, and so arranged that the term of at least one member will expire each year, and their successors shall be elected or appointed for terms of three or five years, each as determined by the city council in the case of a city, and by a town meeting in the case of a town. The motion there, there is to have town solicitor come and join us at the next meeting to discuss this, and see if we're functioning properly.
So, I think, um, I think we can, I don't, I don't know if we need a motion to...
Excuse me?
I don't know if we need a motion to ask that question of the solicitor, but it sounds like the comments are related to planning board terms, uh, appointments, and, uh, the chart, the charter, the town charter, so, we can, um, maybe through staff, ask for some clarification and update and put it on the agenda, is that something we can add?
I believe this has been previously discussed, um, and already vetted with Member Grove, but I will discuss this and report back to the board.
Okay, so we'll, we can put it on our agenda for commentary, um, do you think that would be something that we would put on for the some, what type, sort of timeframe do you think we would need to put it on?
I would need to default, I would need to default to, to our solicitor, uh, we have a solicitor and assistant solicitor, one's on maternity leave for two months, um, so I will discuss that with Nicole, I'll report back to you, and then we can go from there.
Okay. Are you else on the agenda? Are there else on the agenda? The next item on our agenda this evening is a continued public hearing for twenty-five Commercial Street, file number twenty-two dash zero-five, special, special permit and site plan review for Landing Apartments LLC, um, if I could just grab a quick five-minute break, been sitting for too long, um, so we'll pick this up, um, at nine fifty-five, four minutes, I lied, be right back.
I was telling Kim we should have her give, give her a little speech before every important vote.
It is helpful.
No, it's very helpful.
It's very helpful.
We told, Bob did it several times, he had to, everybody, they get crazy, everybody gets crazy.
Well, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's always helpful.
I didn't, I was just saying to Melissa, I didn't realize he, he's the head guy, the guy who got up tonight, I thought the other guy was the head guy. Everybody's the head guy.
Whoever's at the meeting.
Who's at the meeting, yeah, that's right.
Waiting for Member Grove, just gonna wait for Member Grove to step in.
Where did that come from?
I was a little, huh? We'll find out.
I know. It's happening.
Sounded good to me.
You can get a full retirement benefit.
Oops, oh, God.
Hey, how's your new young guy working?
Yeah, we actually have a guy.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Why? I sort of had that feeling when you dropped it.
Uh, it just wasn't a good fit for us.
So do you have any opinions?
Yeah, we do, we have, um, we have a, we have a, we have a part-time supervisor.
The guy who came over and did the survey?
Yes, that, uh, he works for us, and I also have like a chief surveyor, who like manages our surveys and stuff, and Mike and I do most everything. All right, everyone's back, and just a reminder that we're on the twenty-five Commercial Street, special permit and site plan review, continued public hearing for Landing Apartments LLC is the applicant, um, Attorney Marinelli, if you want to jump right in to, uh, just kind of, an update since we saw you last and where you're at.
Yes, uh, Chairperson Joyce and members of the board, for the record, Frank Marinelli, and I'm pleased to appear on behalf of Landing Apartments, with me is the Principal of Landing Apartments, Josh Katzen, and also here is Christie DeAndrea, who you met, uh, on June fourteenth, Christie, uh, gave a presentation on her business, Veterinary Urgent Care Centers, V U C C, also here is, uh, her Director of Communications, Tom Lehman, and, um, Christie operates, uh, the veterinary care centers in Plymouth, Quincy, and in Easton, so the three thousand square feet at issue, uh, tonight, and we're seeking the special permit, uh, we presented the last time, uh, that, uh, decision fifteen dash eleven of the planning board was the approval of the hundred and seventy-two unit, eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-six square feet, uh, of commercial in a mixed-use TOD development, and, um, as a result of that approval, a hundred and seventy-two units were built, they were almost, they were promptly occupied, and as the board knows, the eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand square feet of commercial languished and took some five years to finally get, um, we had the leasing office, we had, uh, then got Keller Williams, and then got, uh, River Shed Restaurant, so this is the final three thousand square feet, it could be occupied by right, by retail, which would be more intense than the kind of niche use, that specialized use of V U C C, and the traffic reports that we've, that we've introduced into the record show that, that this use will in fact be less vehicle trips, less parking demand than the, uh, retail use by right that could occupy the remaining, the remaining three thousand square feet, obviously, we all have an interest in seeing the three thousand square feet be occupied, uh, not good to have unoccupied vacant commercial space, particularly brand-new space that's all built out, ready, ready to go in terms of the box, uh, Christie will develop in accordance with the, with the floor plan that we've also submitted, so, um, what we have done, uh, in, in working with the staff, we were asked to try to, uh, create some more surplus in, in the parking lot, um, there's a one hundred and ninety-eight car garage, and we have, uh, for the hundred and seventy-two units, and we also have that's owned by Landing Apartments, a forty-eight space surface lot, so when you take into consideration the River Shed, um, use of the surface lot and, which is allowed, completely allowed by fifteen dash eleven, um, that's fourteen spaces outside, the Keller Williams would be another five spaces outside, and V U C C would be twelve, so that's thirty-one spaces accounted for, and we would have seventeen surplus, so, um, we don't believe, except, you know, maybe on a Saturday night, there's been any demonstrable issue with the property that we own, um, you know, if there is any generic parking concern in the area, um, certainly there's, you know, there's hundreds of vacant MBTA spaces, um, and we've documented that with photos from, uh, from November, from January, from April, so, um, we have addressed what, um, the staff had requested in terms of, uh, the parking, um, don't reserve all of those spaces, Keller Williams and also Landing, we moved them inside to the garage, we freed up six additional spaces in the surface lot as is presented in the staff report, um, and, uh, pretty much that, that summarizes, I think, what the, the only issue was, we had, uh, we have one space that's reserved for drop-off pickup, we've made sure that there are no dumps, dumpsters in the municipal lot, um, we've supplied photographic evidence of that, and, um, we've reviewed all of the draft conditions that have been presented for tonight's meeting, and, uh, they're, they're acceptable to the applicant, so if you have any questions, uh, on Christie's operation, uh, where she's happy to answer them, or we're happy to answer any questions in general, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, if I could just ask, uh, Director Santucci Rossi to go over the staff report, um, just in brief summary, and anything you'd like to know on the conditions or pro, progress made between the last meeting and this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just to, just to follow up from the comments from Attorney Marinelli, uh, we did meet quite a few times since the last meeting, going over tables, who's parking where, who's doing what, what can change, what's really needed, and kind of really drilled down on that, uh, Josh was able to, um, come back with some concessions, um, the fifteen-minute spot was added, uh, in the back is suggested by Member Crowa, the one that was difficult, I think Member McCallum was concerned about people meandering down and back, um, that has now been an expanded trash area, uh, there was some stuff out in the parking lot, they got that all cleaned up, they got rid of the future residence spots, if somebody calls, they'll let them in the garage, I mean, people are looking at apartments online now and making appointments, so it's not like, you know, all these people are going to show up at once and want to look at apartments, uh, and then they were able to augment the Keller Williams spaces as well, so we freed up about six spots outside that were previously restricted, um, so I think that that's a, a, a good, a good move, uh, and a, a nice opportunity to, uh, open up those spaces, uh, the draft conditions are pretty basic, most of the stuff ties back to the site plan review fifteen eleven, um, for the development itself, uh, anything that needed to be separated out, uh, has been done so, uh, in the conditions, the stuff we just talked about with the parking, we have an updated parking plan, talked a little bit about the landscaping, we're going to look at that when we close out the project, I'll be making some recommendations on additional landscaping and plantings that need to be added, stuff that needs to get spruced up, we have the updated parking table in here as well, um, we have the trip generation memo, um, in regards to the vet, that's really nothing to be concerned about, um, and then we did, I asked for a follow-up memo, um, from Christie, and she provided that about sort of the operations, and you make an appointment, do you just show up, and sort of, how does that work, so we put a condition in there, and I think really the goal, uh, and what she had spoken about is for just like, kind of like real time, like your dog's ready, or your cat's ready, or drop them off now, so there isn't this like whole, I don't know why I keep visualizing all these animals and people standing around and stuff, but to just really minimize all of that, um, and also, uh, able to nail down the sign package, so the planning board can approve that as well, uh, the River Shed, the River Shed sign is up, uh, we worked with, um, Lou Farigno is actually the gentleman's name, ID sign or sign ID, uh, and he designed that one, they had something crazy that didn't conform, dialed that in, then we had Keller Williams, uh, Connor and I recently did administrative site plan review, again, he had something, no, dial it in, do it, do what River Shed did, so now, uh, Christie, DeAndrea, and the VCUU, same thing, we'll have some uniformity, a little bit of branding through the building, nice lettering, very modest in size with the blade sign and some gooseneck lighting, so that building will really, now with this third tenant, will really start to sort of, you know, provide some cohesiveness in that, that little block there, um, down in the landing, uh, and that's basically it, um, like I said, all the operating stuff and all of, you know, the general conditions about drainage and all of that is really captured in the, in the original decision, which, again, we haven't closed out yet, so there is an opportunity, uh, in the event that something, um, here we missed, there we need to revisit, there's opportunity for that in the future. Um, so yeah, basically presented some basic conditions here, included the signage, conditions about waste, animal medical waste and other, other waste as well, too, we just want to make sure that it's going to be a lot more animals coming to the property that, you know, that, that's taken care of in the appropriate manner, um, talked about the expanded dumpster area, and no, I, my favorite of no outside storage trailers and all of that, uh, things tend to pop up from time to time in different places, and then they just, ooh, disappear, so we just want to make sure those don't pop up anymore, so, yeah, that's it, pretty straightforward, um, I think it's, it's, uh, the things that I was concerned about and the board was concerned about, on the notes that I had from the last meeting, those have been revised, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and just a reminder, this is still an open public hearing, so if anybody from the public wishes to make any comment, um, please feel free to come up during our deliberation, Member McCallum, do you have any additional questions or comments?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair, um, this is, uh, a vast improvement, so appreciate the efforts, um, in conjunction with the staff, um, I think you'll be happy, you won't, you won't be turning around in that area over there, I guess my question, Mr. Marinelli, are these, all these spaces for the different tenants, are they going to be, have a sign, are they going to be marked, or how?
No, it's, it's, it's pretty much non-exclusive, except for the ones that we did leave for Keller Williams, but with, with the staff, we, we moved six that were previously reserved for Landing Apartments and four partially for Keller Williams, we took six of them out and, and deleted.
So are they going to say KW on them or something, or just?
Some of them, some of them still will, but it's, there's, we, we freed up six for the general public use.
Yeah, okay, and I assume since...
Six additional on top of, you know, so there's seventeen, uh, beyond what is needed for zoning under the, under the uses of the, um, eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-six square feet.
And I assume since you have a pretty high occupancy that the garage is pretty full with tenants, so, yeah, okay, so that's up, um, my only other comment is, um, I like your sign.
Yeah, sign does.
Very clever, very whimsical, I get it, yeah, no, it's good, looks good, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Crowa, any comments or questions?
No, happy to see the parking space moved, but otherwise looks good, be, be a good use for Braintree.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was a good suggestion, and that you had the last time that we incorporated on that drop-off space.
Member Grove, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Nora.
Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, I also appreciated the signage package, um, and I thought that it made an important distinction for people that this was veterinary urgent care, so there'd be no confusion there, thank you.
Thank you, um, I just had a follow-up question for staff with regards to any further, um, closeout on this development in general, um, did you mention something with regards to that?
I did, Madam Chair, so they haven't gotten Asbilt's approval yet, we talked about that a little bit, I think, at the first hearing, um, there's some landscaping that, uh, Mr. Katzen's waiting, um, for Waymoth to do something, I know he was talking to Mr. Luongo for, uh, three hours this evening, so maybe he can give us a little more information, um, on that, but once that's all done, then I'm gonna, you know, get out the fine comb and, and make sure everything's nice and tight, and, um, it's, it's always nice to have an opportunity after the fact to go back and, and take a look at things, they did the traffic monitoring, that's forty-five to fifty percent below what the projections were. Uh... were. And it's interesting, so it's, and there's a decent amount of cars there. So I think people are, are likely using other methods of transportation to get to and from work, but they still have that vehicle so that when they get home, they can go and do their shopping or visit people in other parts of the, of the Commonwealth that don't have the nice accessibility that we have here. So traffic volume is not a concern. We'll continue to keep our eye on the parking and sort of, you know, as Christie gets up and operating and whatnot. And I did include the provisions for going over to the T for their employees and also the employees of Landing Fifty-Three. She's made that offer. Mr. Katson's the applicant and owns the building and part of that offer. So in the event that that's needed, they'll be, they'll be using that at their, at their cost for their employees.
Okay. And then I just had kind of a, an unrelated concern to Condition Thirty-Eight, which does note that every night prior to the close of business, the applicant shall inspect the exterior portions of the property and remove animal waste that was deposited outside. And I just say that as I know, you know, without your use being in that property, it seems like the residents are allowed animals and I don't really know if we had any conditions related to animal waste, but I know in like going to visit the businesses in the Landing and walking, you know, in, you know, between the buildings and stuff, I have noticed just an incredible amount of evidence of like grass that's been burned out by animal use or like tufts of grass. So it may be an unnecessary burden to put that complete removable on the applicant every day, but I do think the development as a whole should somehow try to address that and I just wanted, I guess, to mention that.
Yeah. Applicant is applicant and property owner? The applicant is actually Mr. Katson for this application. So between him is owning the entire building and being the landlord and the, the, the business operator, I think that that's something that can be either, whether they split it up, my guy goes tonight or your guy, that's for them to figure out, but it's, that is something that can be also an obligation to redefine applicant as property owner as well. So that's something that, if it's a bigger issue to your point beyond the vet, that's something that Mr. Katson would, I would hope, would step up and assume responsibility for or split that responsibility.
Yeah, I think, I think I've just noticed it, I've noticed it. And I think, I was just kind of curious too as like a consideration for what we can condition or like what is the, what is the process? I mean, it's, I don't know how many residents have animals or how many animals are using, but there's not too much like landscaped area for animals to use, so, yeah.
Hey guys, me again. Christie DeAndrea for the record. This is, we have a number of leased hold spaces with V U C C, so it is a common issue. And Josh and I have a historical relationship with another property that we have to, that I lease from him. The only reason to bring this up is it is, it is a common thing that we do have to address. We've addressed it depending on the landlord a number of different ways. Sometimes it does mean changing the actual landscaping to make it more pet-friendly. We've used things like pea gravel and things like that. So happy to do whatever you suggest. The only reason I bring it up is because we have solutions to these, so you don't have to brainstorm them if you don't want to. If you'd like to just ask us to come up with a solution, we're happy to partner with Josh to get that done for you.
Yeah. I think it's not going to be a function of your use, I think it's just a function of how many residents have pets.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And we didn't real, I don't think we ever realized that or like we, it's, it's not, it's a strange thing to, but it's very noticeable when you're walking around in that back area.
It is. And just for your suggestion, using pea gravel or different types of landscaping may be something that you, that we've done in the past, it's worked really well, just because it is so common now with people having pet-friendly buildings and commercial spaces and things like that.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful.
Madam Chair, I was, I was just kind of motioning to Connor when you made the comment about the burnt grass, because I remember him making a comment when we were out there doing a site visit and it wasn't that there was animal urine marks, it was that they actually have sections of like fake grass out there.
Yeah, I just, I don't, that wasn't-
Have you done that, Mr. Katson? Why don't you come on up? We have a couple of questions for you, please.
That wasn't always like that though. I think that might be something they did to make it look better because it wasn't established. I don't know. I'm just, I think it's something worth noting.
Yeah, I don't recall that being there before. So what, what's happened to the actual grass in the back of the building?
Well, some of it has suffered from animal waste from time to time and we've replaced some. I think probably the best thing for us to do going forward is to consult with Christie on some of the possible remedies and we'll take care of putting them in, maybe a different kind of grass or different kind of gravel. But you're right, there has been some damage and we have to stay on top of that.
So have you removed like real grass and put down turf?
That would, that would be a possibility.
No, have you already done that?
That, I don't know specifically if we've done it yet.
On our side or on the Waymoth side?
Right at the end. Of the, I mean, right at the end of the pathway, the archway, yeah, there's, on the left, there's artificial turf. I mean, I've walked it.
Honestly, that's not even the area. I think there's quite, I think there's a few areas. So Connor and I will go back out and take a look and we'll follow up.
It looks good. Okay.
That was all that I had. So the applicant does have the conditions and his draft conditions?
Yes, we read them. We're fine with the conditions. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Good. Yep. Member Connolly?
When the project was initially permitted, was screening considered, like when you're coming into the Landing, you can see all of the like HVAC and other units on the, I was wondering if, if that was part of that process?
So for the record, I did not do the initial review on this project, I want to make that very clear. And I asked previous director about that, I don't know, probably fifty times. I don't believe that there was. There is probably something that they can do about it. There's a lot of techniques I've seen used to try to screen that. I know exactly what you're talking about. Yes.
And then another question, is the Keller Williams sign, is that a temporary sign right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Their sign will be exactly like the same letters in veterinary urgent care.
Right.
Is it doubled Keller Williams Showcase Properties, I think.
Yep. Very good, thank you.
Same style, same person, same everything.
Thank you, Member Connolly. All right, so we can, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application? Not seeing anyone. We could have a motion to close the public hearing and then also a separate motion to enter into the record correspondence through the August ninth date? If anybody would like to make those motions or one of the motions?
Motion to close public hearing?
Motion by Member Crowa, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. A motion to enter into the record correspondence through the August ninth?
No move.
Motion by Member Grove, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McComme. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Chair, I'll entertain a motion on this application, twenty-two dash oh five.
Motion to grant special permit and site plan review for file twenty-two oh five with conditions as drafted and discussed tonight.
Is it twenty-two oh five, twenty, I just want to make sure I reference that right? Twenty oh five is, this, the correspondence list says twenty-two oh five, but the staff report says-
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, it was a motion to approve?
Yes.
And a second by Member Grove. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you very much. Best of luck in your moved practice. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is a continued public hearing for ten seventy Liberty Street. File number twenty-two dash zero six is a grading permit.
For the record, Jed Hannon with Atlantic Coast Engineering, Registered Engineer, Massachusetts. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Okay, so if I could just provide a introductory background and a little bit of history, we'll go over the site plan and then open up to any questions you may have, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Great. So we're here representing the owners of the property. We got a call after their retaining wall project was shut down. The project entails cuts and fills greater than two feet and it was for a proposed retaining wall, approximately three point seven feet in height. So of course we were brought in late, it was kind of like a discovery phase of what happened, you know, asked a lot of questions. So we're here before you seeking an after-the-fact grading permit. The owner wasn't aware of the bylaw. The history on the property, there's a lot of old trees. They finally sent me some pictures, which I can share with you folks. A lot of old trees and brush that surrounded the property. There was moss on the roof, several old trees as well, some of which had fell. So from, from hearing and seeing these pictures, you know, I don't think this was done egregiously in terms of the tree removal. So it's really two separate issues. One is the cuts and fills associated with the retaining wall and the grading and then several trees and brush was removed as a result of concerns for safety to both the house, the garage, and then just the, kind of the roof overall from a safety standpoint, which, which are depicted in these pictures, which I'd be happy to share with you. We've completed the site survey, the design of the retaining wall. We've addressed first round of comments from the staff and the planning board. There's a couple of remaining items that we need to address. The owners did say that prior to cutting anything, they, they did reach out to DPW and the Building Department on any regulations associated with, with cutting. And apparently somebody came out to the house and looked at it and said that, you know, it seems totally reasonable what you're planning to do. What they didn't do was contact the planning board to see if there's any regulations associated with it, which they readily admitted that they didn't. So that's kind of the broad history and introduction on this. We can make all the minor updates that are left. One, one question I did have for the staff and the board is regarding a potential revegetation plan under Section one twenty-five dash twelve oh one and what that is required and if that's mandatory. Again, I don't think that this owner egregiously just clear-cut their lot. I mean, again, I'd be happy to share these pictures with you.
Yeah, if you have an extra copy, I can pass it around to board members while you're talking and that way we have that for reference.
It's a lot of overgrowth.
Yep, thank you.
Also have a letter from one of the neighbors, which was probably not addressed to the right person.
I'll pass these around and is this all right for us to keep?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
The last letter there, the couple was here earlier and they frankly didn't want to stay too late. I guess they were coming back from a road trip in Vermont, but the spirit, the essence of the letter is basically supporting what this family did here in terms of clearing up the property. It had a lot of overgrowth. I guess the previous owner really didn't take care of it at all. It looked terrible frankly from the pictures I see and from the couple that was here earlier. So they wrote that letter in support of the work that the family did. Again, I don't think it was done egregiously. The property does look a lot cleaner. The after-the-fact grading permit is what it is. They weren't aware of the bylaw. They accept that and that's why we're here before you. The one thing we're looking relief for relief on is this requirement for a revegetation plan, which I think is a reasonable request. At this point, I'll open up to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I'll just ask if the Assistant Director could go over the staff report and I guess just update on any outstanding items we're still waiting for. You certainly aren't the first after-the-fact permit and I'm sure you won't be our last, but we can kind of go through what's, what's required in the board comments tonight and see where we're at.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we issued a first set of comments for the July meeting. The applicant requested to open and continue the matter without testimony. They submitted revised plans late July in support of this application. There are a couple of items that are not satisfied based on the original staff report. We're seeking that the applicant revise the plan for the appropriate datum used in addition to installing erosion sediment controls around and disturbed area at the rear, in addition to the revegetation and standards under twelve oh one H four A through F, which holds jurisdiction on clearing standards. Staff isn't seeking a huge landscaping plan, but we are hoping that as part of the removal of the vegetation, that there is a proposal to have species in kind with what was removed, granted that they're not invasive, in order to, to help reestablish what was removed. Aside from that, staff has recommended to continue this matter with revisions being made as stated within the staff report.
Okay. And then just a reminder, this is a continued public hearing. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter, please feel free to come, come up at any time during our deliberations. I'm going to open it up to the board for comments and questions for the applicant and staff and I'll start with Member McComme.
What's their problem? What, what do they not want to do or they want relief from?
The revegetation plan.
And, and that's because?
If you look at the pictures that I just distributed, their position is that they removed a combination of old trees that were dead, trees that were susceptible to damaging their house and then overgrowth, as you can see in the pictures that surround the property.
As you know, whenever you do these projects and of course, as was mentioned, one of the pet peeves is when people start to do things without getting permission first, there always comes with grading, you know, landscape plans and so on and so forth. I just, I don't feel like I'm, it's, the comments are compelling in terms of, you know, picking and choosing what to do. So I don't, I don't know, I'd ask the Assistant Director, are we looking for something excessive here or just, you know, having it look good or meaning?
It's not so much having it look good, it's having, you know, trying to reestablish what was there without harming the single-family dwelling as stated by the applicant. I haven't had a chance to take a look at what they submitted, but under Article Twelve, the revegetation standards, we are seeking that they propose something to replace in kind what was there, not specifically size, but more so species and such.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
What did they spend for tree removal here?
I have no idea frankly.
I mean, we're not talking, you know, I mean, there was some substantial, substantial, I mean, I, I hear you on the brush, but I mean, this is like, this is not brush. I mean, these are substantial, substantial trees.
Oh yeah, they readily acknowledge that they removed trees, but there were reasons Oh yeah, they readily acknowledge that they removed trees, but there were reasons behind.
So I get the whole cleanup and stuff, but like, you know, it's nice to keep maybe just one and, you know, some mulch around it or something, but that, that substantial tree removal. Were you able to quantify exactly what was taken off the lot?
All I have, because we weren't there right at the time, is the written statement from the owner.
Okay.
And of course, the GIS plan views that you guys sent.
It might, it might be, it might be helpful to, there must be a contract with the person. I must need a crane and all kinds of stuff to get those trees out of there.
Sure.
So whoever did that work would know what they pulled out of there. And that might, that might be helpful.
Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
I guess as far as vegetation, I'm not, I'm not following exactly what was removed or not. But I, from my perspective, if we're allowed to do it under the ordinance, I wouldn't mind something less formal with what was removed and what's being proposed as far as replacement instead of having it be particularly located based on whatever information you can recreate and put onto a stamped plan and what goes into those requirements. You know, I do feel bad for homeowners that are put into the situation when they don't know about what happened, the grading permit and everything else and just, you know, having to pay you to sit here for four and a half hours to present and then come back another night is, it does add up. So to the extent that we can get the information, we need to look at it in a less formal matter. I would be on board with that. That's it.
Okay. Member Grove, any comments or questions? Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I drive by there two or three times a day and the place looks a thousand percent better than it did before. So I'd be pretty disposed to let them continue their, what they're doing. It's a lot better than what was there.
Okay, that's helpful. Member Conley, any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
My own, I guess the commentary I would add, I guess along the lines of, you know, if there is a requirement for revegetation or some plan to replace or reconfigure landscaping on a site, and the exact, trying to quantify what vegetation was removed, whether it was specific trees on the property, it's kind of hard to tell. I think even like the front, like right-of-way line, I think it would be helpful if the survey showed the fence lines and any existing vegetation. And the survey also doesn't show the stone wall at the corner of Liberty and Forest Street. So, I mean, it's really hard to say, like, did they, did they remove, did they remove the trees along Liberty Street? Which, do you know which trees were specifically removed along Liberty Street?
Again, this, this happened, as far as I know, over a year and a half period. And then approximately five months ago,
Is there any?
Stop work notice was issued, so.
Is there any evidence of the trees, stumps, or anything like that, that you, that you recall offhand?
Not really.
Okay. I think a little bit more effort just put into the plan of what was there and removed as best can be determined. And then some sort of plan for what the ultimate goal is without us necessarily setting that requirement. I think that would be helpful to understand. I still feel like there's information on the plan missing that might be, that might help us dot all our i's and cross all our t's on this. And I know you are working through some items that the staff has identified. But I'd like to see the fences and existing vegetation shown, especially if there are trees that were preserved. Has the work completely been done or is it like still have to be finished up?
Still has to be finished there under a stop work order from the building department. Yeah, I mean, I think the best, you know, previous layout versus what's there is what staff provided on GIS plan view. There's no records that we could find showing exactly what was removed. So that's the best thing we can go off of. And then we'll try to get the owners to provide a scope of work and either a quote or a contract from their tree removal company, whoever they used, I don't know who they used, to kind of backfigure what was removed. And then, you know, we'll try to get, get them on board, even though they're not on board, for revegetation plan and at least try to satisfy you folks so that we can get this resolved and move ahead before the, the winter season starts. So I guess what I'd ask respectfully is if we can address the comments that, you know, staff brought up, if we can update the plans to reflect those changes and then subject to receipt of a, some kind of a revegetation plan that's satisfactory to you all, you know, we'd like to proceed that way and if that sounds reasonable.
I think, I think that does sound good. I think we should, I think we should include in the survey the location of that stone wall at the corner and the fences. It seems like there's some missing information on the survey. And then I did have one follow-up question on the survey. Note seven says elevation datum equals Google Earth. And I'm unfamiliar with what that means, so I don't know if you could clarify that datum, I guess.
Sure, yeah, I spoke to my surveyor today about that. We did, we did use NGVD eighty-eight. But he did use, he also used Google Earth for just some of the information that wasn't on there, so. But yeah, that is, the datum that the plan is based on is NGVD eighty-eight. And in fact, yeah, it's shown right below the table.
Okay, so we can update that reference?
Yeah, we'll clarify that. Thank you.
I don't have any further comments or questions. So it looks like we would be looking to continue this until the September, yes, of course.
The ordinance is like at a two to one for what they took out. And I can tell you that's going to be a ton of plantings. So just to kind of, so when the, they get the, when the plan comes back, you know, we can start to move into wrapping this up. If you could provide a little bit of feedback on what was acceptable or what would be acceptable for revegetation? I mean, I think from what I remember, it's clear cut, right? Yeah, there's nothing left. So it was, you know, last time I saw it, it was a dust bowl. So I mean, what, you know, do you want to see something in the front yard? Do you want to see something in the backyard? Do you want to see something that creates a little bit of more curb or reestablishes, you know, some of the curb appeal or, you know, Member Kent said it was, it was kind of messy. You know, I just don't want them to come back and then, you know, it's not enough, you know, something like that.
If I could just provide a comment on that. So I know we've worked in Braintree a fair amount in the past and unfortunately, we've dealt with these scenarios before. And typically, we'll bring in Brad Holmes and walk the property with him and have him come up with a mitigation plan to, you know, offset, to the best of our knowledge, you know, what should be done to comply with the bylaw. So if that sounds reasonable, we'd be, again, I know it's going to be challenging to convince the owner, but the bylaw's the bylaw, so.
Yeah, so the bylaw replanting specifically relates to the areas impacted by the grading, is that correct? So like if there wasn't grading in the front, but they removed vegetation, is that considered part of the grading effort? I guess I'm thinking, you know, I think, I think there's a, I think personally, there's a lot of different aesthetics on residential landscaping and some people want a very, it's like a newer, modern look where you have, you know, and it's also great from a sustainability perspective if you have less plantings to water and maintenance. So I, I would almost just, would like to see a plan that's something, but maybe not, not get too tied up in like numbers of replacements personally. But I can't speak for the board. I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on that.
I don't think if it's, there's no grading permit, if somebody just clears their trees on their lot, there's no requirement replant, right? Unless you trigger some other.
Right, obviously within, within conservation, you know, you trigger that. And no, so we were talking about this the other day, you know, if I decide to clear cut my whole lot, I'm fine. But because this guy was grading, he now falls under that. There's an ordinance, a tree removal ordinance that's put forth by one of the councils that we've been giving some suggestions on as well. And interestingly enough, that like exempts single-family homeowners as well. So, you know, the single-family homeowners, believe it or not, are the biggest culprits of, of removing trees in the development scenarios where typically involved in this landscape architect and so forth. So if they just decided to, the perfect example is the corner of Grove and Birch, maybe? So they just, they didn't grade, they just took down a mess and put in some rocks and you can totally, because I was watching it, watching it, watching it, and they're fine. So that's why I was like, just a little bit of direction on, on, it is the board's discretion, you know, to, to the applicant on what would be acceptable given the replanting. And then if this was no grading, you know, frankly, I think the replanting stuff is a little bit aggressive at a two to one, especially when we don't have a tree removal. If we had a tree removal ordinance that mirrored that, that'd be a different story. But Mr. Hannity has done replanting plans on other properties that were acceptable to the board and they were not at the two to one ratio.
And so this, who else reviewed it? This is the current, this is what it looks like after or this was before?
It's, there's nothing.
Okay, okay. That's what I was getting confused on what was happening.
And a wall.
So, okay, yeah, I mean, I would, I would be good with just a proposal that sort of makes sense for the corner lot and not, not the two to one. I don't know what that looks like exactly.
Any other comments?
I think Mr. Hannan said he's done this before. I'm going to, I think we should give him some leeway. Let's see, he, he knows what everybody said and what the feeling is. I think he can translate that to the owners and let's give him a chance, right? And if, if he doesn't think it's sufficient, I'm sure that he'll tell them. And then I think we should have Member Kent review it since he lives close by.
Is that enough direction? Is there any other comments? Does that make sense? So a motion to continue to the September thirteenth, is that right? At seven fifteen.
So, so move.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll see you in September. Thank you. All right, let's see here. The next item on our agenda of continued public hearings is town council order number twenty-two dash zero one two, which is our zoning ordinance text amendment related to inclusionary housing and amendments to additional sections. I know we've been continuing this for a couple of months now, so any update on when we might have more information?
Very, very quickly, Madam Chair, we, the mayor and I continue to discuss this and sort of look at past projects and application of, of different requirements that we've instilled in developers in absence of an inclusionary ordinance. And he's asked that this be continued so that we can continue those discussions. We were going to meet with some developers, it's summertime now and scheduling is just crazy given the, given the permitting load in the office and the staffing. So we'll put this back on for September and I'd like to try to, you know, move to, to wrap it up at the next meeting. So I'll have an updated memo in advance of that based on my discussions with the mayor.
Great, great. And I think that is all.
We just need a motion to continue, Madam Chair.
Oh, all right, so that would be on the September thirteenth at seven fifteen?
Yes.
All right, motion to continue this matter to September thirteenth at seven fifteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll see that in September and then.
Motion to adjourn.
Very good, a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you all.